Welcome, everybody, to the Blue Lake City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Twenty, I was going based on the old one, I apologize.
Sorry.
Twenty-seventh, six-thirty. Uh, would everybody stand for the flag?
Flag bleeds to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. In the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, would you please establish a quorum?
Councilmember Napier, here. Councilmember Louis Luso, here. Councilmember Swatki, here. Councilmember Scipani, here. Councilmember Vales.
All right, old business from last night's meeting. Um, we had a closed session. Um, we adjourned the closed session at six-fifty. We moved to adjourn at eight-oh-six on eight-twenty-six, and we returned to Skinner Store, uh, Skinner Store with a quorum to respond, report out, uh, no reportable action at eight-ten P M. Okay. All right, moving on to item number two. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of the authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for the public input session to assure each individual presentation is heard. The council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. I'm opening it up for public comment. Who would like to speak? Yes, Adeline, go ahead.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm wearing my Yimby shirt again. Proud Blue Lake Yimby. Yes, in my backyard is what it stands for, and that just keeps the focus on affordable housing. And I see it's more about that on Agenda number four. I've been called the fearless mayor, former mayor of Blue Lake by one of my supporters. As a famous president Franklin D. Roosevelt once said, "We have nothing to fear but fear itself." Welcome to Jill Duffy, our interim manager. I worked for Jill's campaign for supervisor when Blue Lake was part of the Fifth District. I was also working with her as, uh, she was the executive director of the Humboldt Waste Management Authority, H W M A. But keep in mind Jill is temporary, three to six months. I had to laugh when Kat Napier said she has integrity. We had a manager with integrity. Her name is Mandy Mager. Jill has lived in Blue Lake a few times. Mandy has lived her whole life in Blue Lake and traces her native roots from her father. Joel works here eight hours, then leaves, goes back to Fortuna, just like Wayne Riggy used to do. Mandy was here twenty-four-seven. After being our manager, she also continued her commitment to Blue Lake and still does as a member of our Blue Lake Fire Department. We had a wonderful Annie and Mary Day. Thanks go to Blue Lake Chamber President Justin Goad and the Hardworking Chamber Board of Directors. The parade at eleven organized by Board Director Mandy Mager and announced by Andy, by Andy Jones at the town square was great. The Bill Nestler Car Show had many entries, and all proceeds go to the Blue Lake Parks and Rec Department. Thanks Glenn Bernard. The Wannika ladies and museum members made one thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents selling baked goods, coffee, and soda. The Timber Heritage Association brought double the tracks this year as last year, and their speeder train whistle could be heard throughout town on Saturday and Sunday. In the park, we had over fifty vendors, including the Redwood Coast Mountain Biking Association, who sold the beer for the day. The Blue Lake Fire Department sold out of Blue Lake beef sandwiches and made over a thousand dollars. The Humboldt Folk Life Society provided the music and four great bands, emceed by Patrick Cleary. Yours Truly walked around with the fiddling case and netted one hundred and forty-eight dollars for the chamber. Once again, good job, President Justin Goad and the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. On Saturday, August sixteenth, we had our annual citywide yard sale. Despite the rain for the second time, it was wonderful, seeing families and Cal Poly Humboldt students buying necessities. I started the Blue Lake City Wide Yard Sale in twenty-oneteen.
Thank you, Adam. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
Uh, put just press on the video. Just click on that.
Ready?
Nope.
Go ahead. I wish to, uh, uh, thank the current council. Uh, I think some wonderful things are hopefully in the works. With your help and Supervisor Steve Madron and his replacement during next election cycle, we look forward to putting Blue Lake back. Nobody has really made an effort to do that in all these years. I think it's time we put back our namesake and put it back there, and I look forward to that project coming to completion. Uh, we, 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 right now, we have some major negative things, which are carryovers from the last ten years, of my opinion, mismanagement. We have leaky water tanks. They're leaking like a sieve up there. We're losing all kind of money. We, we, I went down to the rancheria, and they have a big shiny new water tank down there, and I would envision most likely they're gonna run a line up to the main. Why should they buy the water from Blue Lake when they can get it cheap and buy it directly from the Water District? Makes no sense. They also have a very large sewer system treatment plant area flagged out there, where my guess is that we're gonna have that in. So what happens to us, my understanding, talking staff, that's approximately a twenty-five or thirty percent hit on our sewer and water funds. Uh, that's not a small thing that we're gonna have to do. You're gonna have to deal with, you've inherited this problem. You've inherited a, uh, a defunct, uh, site down here at Blue Lake Power that I don't know if they paid rent or water for ten years. I mean, this, this is something that should have been taken care of years ago, and now you're saddled with, with the, the layovers of, uh, what prior administration and staff did there. So, uh, it's gonna be an uphill battle. I think, uh, appreciate you folks being willing to take these things on, and, uh, hopefully we'll be able to, uh, to get a tourist industry back here a little bit, maybe, and get some economic development coming to Blue Lake, with those of us locally who wish to participate in that now under your guidance. Uh, the downtown, it would be great to have that all re-designated multi-use, which is now hobbled because it's commercial in some areas, and some people would like to do other development in that area. So hopefully some of these changes will take place, and we will all move forward as a, as a team together. Thanks for my opportunity to speak today.
Uh, whoever wants to come up and speak next, please go up. Yes, go ahead.
I'm hearing from a friend at home that the Zoom is not up, that they are waiting for the host to start the meeting.
Yeah, we've got it up, and it's not functioning. Is, yeah, we, it, it shows that it's running here, but we're hearing, uh, a text message over here as well. A different link. No, we don't have a different link, because we wouldn't have been able to publish it, is the issue.
Would anybody else like to speak, call it comment?
Huh? Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, that's a, yeah, no, that's, that's just a unique one that comes up, yeah.
All right, uh, moving on to the next item, Consent Agenda, item number three.
Um, I would like to pull some of those minutes for corrections.
Great. What would you like to pull?
Uh, we'll start with the first one.
Do you want to pull all the minutes or some?
Well, I know I have corrections on the first two. I don't know if anybody has corrections on any of the others.
I have corrections on the eighth and twenty-second.
So that's the first four. Anybody have corrections for July third, twenty-second, or twenty-eighth?
I'm gonna have you speak up, because I cannot hear you at all.
Okay. We have corrections for the first four minutes listed. Um, I'm asking if anybody has corrections on any of the other minutes.
No, I'm wondering, um, if on F and G, since they're action summary minutes, um, whether we leave them there, but whether or not maybe they could be delayed, because we are talking about that tonight, and whether we would leave them in that form or would want to.
Oh, I, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, so I was just wondering on I, the F and G, their action summary minutes, and that is something we're considering, I think, in item seven. So whether we leave them as they stand or pull them to decide whether they should be different.
So what are you, so again, what are you pulling?
We're pulling the first four. We're pulling, um, for sure, we're pulling February twenty, March twenty-five, April eight, and April twenty-two. And, and then I guess we just need to decide if we just want to approve, uh, April twenty-two and twenty-eight as, as motion summary minutes. Action summary. So, um.
Can we even pull anything, Michelle?
Uh, the eighth and twenty-second, that was, those were the ones that I needed.
Okay. So we're pulling everything?
I don't have, I don't need July.
Cat, anything? All right. So let's go ahead and can we get a motion to pass, uh, item number three, F G H?
Uh, so, can you repeat the motion?
Uh, pull items, um, consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
You want to move the remainder?
Well, does anybody have questions on the dispersments?
I do have some, um, notes on there. I don't know if it's worthy of, of pulling it at this time, unless someone else also has questions. Otherwise, I could just meet with the city manager. I do have some questions, but I, unless another council member also wants to pull the warrants and dispersments, um, I'm also just as happy to meet with the city manager at a later time for questions, so.
Do you have anything on that?
Does the public wish to have anything pulled?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're still waiting for a second.
I'll second.
Is that to approve the balance of the consent calendar minus A, B, C, D?
Yes.
Okay.
We have first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So we pass, um, items E, F, and G. All right, so moving on to N H, excuse me. Um, so moving on to item E, city council minutes, July third, twenty-twenty-five. Or sorry, excuse me, city council meeting minutes, February twenty, twenty-five.
Uh, I'd just like to make the correction there that it was a Thursday, not a Tuesday, February twentieth. Um, also, on page one, on page two, I have, um, a more detailed correction, um, on line thirty-five.
Um, little, okay, line thirty-five.
Line thirty-five, um. It says, uh, Mayor Protem Scipani comments on the formation of the ad hoc, and I would like to add, and I wrote this down, so I'd be happy to give this to you afterwards. The formation of the ad hoc outside of an open council session, an open session council meeting, in spite of multiple requests to agendize this since December twenty-twenty-four. And where it says, um, and the, and the R C E A solicitation timeline, I would, I would add, which was inaccurately portrayed to the council at the twelve-ten-twenty-four meeting.
And I'd like, do you have prepared comments on that one? It's like, yeah, I kind of lost you on it.
Yes, I'm happy to provide that with, afterwards. I'm just stating, um, for everybody, uh, what my corrections were.
Any other corrections from council?
I, I just wanted to say on the February twentieth, it was in the packet before, and it, it, they were the same, um, the same minutes. It didn't say, um, the February twentieth, we had approved all the minutes, and I think it said that that one, um, but they were the same minutes that were in there before.
So, okay.
Does the public wish to speak on this item?
I'd like the council to speak louder. It's very hard to follow with what's bouncing back and forth and how it's going and what's being referenced by whom, and, you know, it's very difficult.
Great.
Whether, whether your mics aren't working or so.
Yeah, unfortunately, the mics don't amplify. Thank you. So, uh, consent agenda item B?
Um, are, are you gonna do a motion for each set of minutes, or are you gonna bundle them?
Bundle.
Really? Okay.
What do you prefer, Jill?
I would prefer individual.
Okay.
Great. So with no other, um, modifications to those, that item, would anybody like to make a motion to pass those minutes?
Move to approve February twentieth minutes with the corrections stated by, uh, Councilmember Scipani, second.
First and second. All of the papers say aye.
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 Minutes.
Second.
Can you repeat what lines you, you are changing? Cause I didn't hear.
Line thirty-five on page two.
Just thirty-five.
It begins on thirty-five.
Okay, yeah, it starts on thirty-five.
And the day is Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Who was my second? You were second, right?
Bayless was the second.
Bayless was the second.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda item B. What modifications did you even made on that?
I'm looking, you know what? I think I don't have one. I had one, and I scratched it out, so it was change, it's gonna change my mind, sorry. Anybody else?
Yeah, and it does look like the March twenty-fifth minutes contain the adoption of the February twentieth minutes, so I think that these were just maybe not published, and anyway.
My, uh, corrections, did you have something?
I just would make sure, run March twenty-fifth now.
Correct.
Yeah, and at least you don't have anything after all.
I think I don't.
Okay. Cat, do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great.
On page three, page three, line ten, uh, Councilmember Napier, motion dies for lack of a second. I believe I saved it from a slow death and pulled it before it died.
Okay.
Withdraw the motion, I believe. Thank you.
See, withdrew the motion.
Michelle, you have nothing?
Not for that day, great.
And? Do you have anything? Does public wish to make any modifications to these minutes?
March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth. Seeing none, let's bring it back to council for approval.
I move that we approve Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, city council minutes with the correction that Councilmember Napier gave.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
Terry.
Terry Bates.
Thank you.
Did you second it?
Bayless second it. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. Moving on to consent agenda item C, city council meeting minutes for April eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, so this is a combined one, um, for April eighth as well as April twenty-second. It looks like there are duplicates. The April twenty-second minutes in my packet are the same as the April eighth minutes in my packet.
Fair enough. This is what was in the server, so if there's, if, if we need to, I would say we can continue this and bring it back to the next meeting if we need to straighten that out.
Sure.
And that is all I had.
Okay.
So you motion to continue it to the next meeting?
Yes. Motion to continue the correction of the April eighth and April twenty-second meeting minutes to the next meeting.
I'll second.
The second by Scipani. Any comment on these meeting minutes? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for a motion approval. All right, if we have the motion, excuse me, a vote. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item number D, city council meeting minutes for April twenty-second, twenty.
We just got that done.
Yeah, those two were together. They were bundled together.
And just confirm, we are not doing each step correct. So we've completed that, consent agenda. Moving on to item number four, housing element update. Next steps. Gary Reese, are you here?
If I, if I might.
Yes, sir.
I really want to thank Gary. He actually had other plans this evening, and so, um, that was unknownst to us yesterday, so his presence and ability to continue this forward is keeping us on track, so thank you, Gary.
Thank you, of course.
Great, so Gary Reese, city planner. So, yeah, we wanted to include this item on the agenda tonight to give you all an update on the process for achieving compliance with state housing law. Hopefully, the staff report we put together was, you know, good explanation of what's been done and what remains to be done. In there, we're explaining kind of the summary of steps that we've completed, and then the next steps to complete. And just to highlight some of these things, because a lot has been done, uh, by the city to work towards compliance. Of course, the council adopted the housing element in July, and after that, it was submitted to H C D. And so the city on August twenty-first got a letter, uh, from H C D stating that the adopted housing element is statutorily compliant with housing element law, so that was great. Uh, also reminding the city, they still need to do the rezoning action, which is that next step I'm going to discuss. Uh, so that's an important milestone, you know, to get that from, from H C D. So that's good progress. Uh, we also did submit a draft electronic site inventory. We got some comments back from H C D, so I'll be meeting with them next week to work through that. We should get that submitted in the next few weeks, so that'll check that box. Uh, another item, too, uh, it was nice, we were able to submit the grant closeout report for the LEAP grant. And so that is now closed out. Uh, H C D accepted the closeout report, so the city's obligations for the LEAP grant are completed. So all positive stuff. Uh, as far as next steps, uh, we need to obviously finish that site inventory with them, and then the rezoning action. And just to remind folks that rezoning action proposes to create a new combining zone, the multifamily combining zone, and that would be implementing housing element program H I fourteen. And that new combining zone is, uh, supposed to be applied to a single site in the city during the sixth planning cycle that's one acre or larger. So that's what the rezoning action is. Um, in preparation for moving that through the adoption process, we have a number of questions for H C D, so we were able to meet with them in early to, uh, mid-August and discuss an appropriate site that that could be applied to. So they provided clear guidance on that, and I know what the site is and the staff reports in the Powers Creek District Zone Opportunity owned by the city. Um, so staff's recommendation will be to apply the multifamily combining zone to that site. Uh, we also got some guidance on the sequo pathway. Uh, some of you may know there were changes to the California Environmental Quality Act. They took effect in July. And, uh, there's a new exemption for doing rezoning actions as part of implementing a housing element. So of course, when we heard about that, we said H C D is this something that could be used for the city's rezoning action. It actually took them a bit to review it. They conferred with their legal counsel and came back with the determination that they believed it could be used by the city of Blue Lake. And they took their time on that, because I'm not sure any other jurisdictions that really asked them to provide a determination on that. Blue Lake was probably the first. So anyway, that's precedent setting for, uh, jurisdiction to not have a substantially compliant housing element, be able to use that exemption, so we were excited to hear that. Um, so at this point, really, the, the path is clear for completing that rezoning action. H C D has reviewed the language of the combining zone. They've advised on a viable site to apply it, and they've provided determination on the sequo pathway. So, um, in the timeline provided to H C D, we were proposing to take some of this to the Planning Commission on August eighteenth. They weren't able to form a quorum. So we're looking at, uh, a meeting, hopefully in September, mid-September sometime, for them to review this and make a recommendation to the city council. But all in all, um, with the pathway that H C D has laid out, it appears that the city will be able to achieve compliance before the September fifteenth date, probably several weeks before. So we're, we're on track for that. Uh, so again, that's, that's good news as well. Um, other than that, that is kind of my summary of the staff report. There was a comment received by a member of the public, which I believe you received, uh, in a pocket from Lisa Hoover. And if the council would like, I can respond to that.
Go ahead, Gary.
Okay. Um, so just to boil down, what I think Lisa's saying here is, uh, it's in reference to the multifamily combining zone and what sites it should be applied to. But I think in essence, what she's saying is it shouldn't be applied to any sites that are identified in the site inventory of the housing element, is having constraints such as creek corridors, riparian zones, flood zones, right, you know, all that kind of stuff. Um, so I think the, the simplest response is that site that H C D has identified as the viable site to apply the multifamily combining zone to is not identified as having any of those constraints in the site inventory of the housing element. Actually, that column is blank for that site. So, um, I think that generally addresses that point. Uh, Lisa also noted a specific property in here that, um, is located along Hatchery Road in between the Tap Room and the Downtown. Um, that site is not supposed to have the multifamily combining zone applied to it, so I, I don't think that's a concern. Um, so I do believe that addresses the comments. Uh, any questions for me on any of this?
I did. Um, if you don't mind and apologize, I don't recognize the parcel number off the top of my head, but in Lisa's letter, she's referring to a specific parcel.
Yeah.
Um, which parcel is that?
So, um, do you know where Crow Park is?
Which one?
Crow Park on the corner there that the old Crow City. So if you continue down Hatchery Road, you run into the parcel. Uh, Crow Park turns into the Chardon Road right of way, and just to, I guess, would be the south of that is this parcel. It's linear. It has a section of creek in it.
Yeah.
Um, there used to be three homes on it. They've since been demolished. It's vacant, and the current owner's proposing some, uh, single-family and A D U's on there.
Great.
Uh, but we're definitely not considering that as a site to apply the multifamily combining zone.
All right, thank you.
Why is that, Gary?
Why?
Why wouldn't you consider that, yeah?
It does have constraints. It is narrow, and it just doesn't seem like a good site to apply, uh, a combining zone that requires a minimum of sixteen units of density up to twenty. It's, it's too much development for that site, in my opinion.
That's true.
Yeah.
Anyone have questions? All right.
I do have another question, yes. Um, I understand we don't have a wide selection of properties, but, um, before what, uh, properties were being selected out, what properties were considered?
Yeah.
Which ones were?
Good question. So, uh, it's the site just north of Paradise K and Jewel Distillery that is the viable site. I also asked about the Danko site. I also asked about the Calgon Carbon site, and I asked about the site here off of South Railroad that's owned by the Farley family. That's a larger site. And when we talked about all of those, it really felt that the one north of Paradise K made the most sense. Uh, Calgon Carbon, it wasn't in the site inventory, so we'd have to make amendments to the housing element. The Danko site, they said, is already being identified for lower-income units. The point of this rezoning is to facilitate, um, conditions to allow somebody to do affordable housing. So in their mind, that's like double counting. It's like, you've already said it's suitable for lowers, so doing that rezoning action there isn't really effective. Um, it, it's already been identified in that way. Um, and then, other than that, the site here, um, you know, there's limited utilities, access, et cetera, for that site, so they didn't consider that one as viable either. So it really came down to that, that one site there, and, and you're right, there aren't a lot of choices.
Um, so the one on South Railroad, is that on the north side or south side?
That would be on the south side.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when you're saying utilities aren't available, is that, it's kind of?
They're undersized for that level of development. There's one six-inch sewer line, is my understanding, going down South Railroad. So to densify that area at this time, there'd be a lot of infrastructure costs associated with that, and that's a burden that would be on developing that property. They don't see that as viable as the one in the Powers Creek District.
And then just as a point of reference, then, on the other hand, the one that was selected, um, but whatever sewer lateral there is already of a much larger capacity.
It is, because it was designed to serve an industrial.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, so, under the sequo notice of exemption, and I was, I, it came in our, um, email this last week, and so I was reading that, and you didn't say that that was because it wasn't in a agricultural zone or wetlands.
Yeah.
It wasn't in a flood zone. Um, and I was wondering if you could help me, so it would help me make a decision, because we're moving on this quickly. Is our levy certified? Has it been certified and accredited?
I want to say the levy was decertified, like many levies, uh, post Hurricane Katrina, um, and I don't believe it's been recertified. I'm not sure.
Okay.
That's going to happen in the future, but it has been analyzed. Um, there were, uh, folks, I don't know if it was geologists, hydrologists, engineers, that did a report and looked at it and identified they're needing some minor improvements, nothing substantial that is still sound and still protective of the city.
Okay.
And the FEMA mapping was redone in either two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and they essentially left the mapping as is. That area is in the five-hundred-year flood plain, and That area is in the five-hundred-year flood plain and not in a special flood hazard area like the hundred-year flood plain. So you don't need flood insurance to develop down there, and it is considered to be protected by the levy and not subject to flooding by Powers Creek.
Okay, so there would be no standard by FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineers if a levy was not certified or accredited. That it would meet, still meet the guidelines of not being a high.
Because the levy is still structurally sound. I know that the county has engaged in some efforts to try and get the levies recertified in the county. Hank Seaman would probably be the person you'd want to talk to about that at County Public Works.
Okay.
But anyway.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council before we open it up to the public?
I think I have one.
Sure, go ahead.
The lot that is now going to take the the combining zone. If somebody went in there and wanted to to build something that was less dense than that, they can, correct?
Cannot.
They cannot.
It's a minimum density that's being specified there of sixteen units per acre up to a maximum of twenty. So the development have to fall in that range.
Okay, and. And is that, does that zone apply in perpetuity?
That's a good question. I mean, you know, we're going to do it during this planning cycle. If the city was going to go change that down the road. That'd be a question for HCD. Usually, you don't want to change something after you relied on it to get a compliant housing element. So I would just treat it as though, yeah, it is in perpetuity. It's going to be done and developed, and yeah, I would just make that assumption.
We'll see. Yep, okay.
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
You might be able to fill in the blanks for me a little bit, which is, we did receive a resignation from one of the planning commissioners this morning. And so you now have a quorum of three.
Yeah.
In individuals, so we'll make sure that it gets noticed. But if there is somebody interested in serving, it's going to be really important to move on this, especially with. The actions which are necessary for you to complete this rezoning effort.
Yeah, and as Mr. Swasky knows, there's a lot of things coming up. It'd be really nice to have a full planning commission, so, yeah.
Can you tell us who resigned?
Isaac. Sorry, getting the first name or last name correct.
Isaac.
Matt Isaac, thank you, okay.
So left, we have Court Pryor, Matthew Shang, and Jason Shay, I think is someone else who's left, yeah.
I'd like to open up for a public comment if we have no other questions for Gary. Gary, do you want to stay there in case the public has questions, that we can have like a microphone go around, or what would you, what would you prefer to do?
I I say you take public comment, note what your questions are that you want me to respond to.
Okay, great.
And so then I can do that afterwards.
Awesome, thank you.
I have a quick, I like, Gary, is your response? Paradise K.
Alex, would you go ahead and direct the question at us?
Property north of Paradise K. I don't know whether it butts or infringes upon the old log pond that McIntosh Lumber had on. Which is not a foundation which you could build. And I'm just wondering, were you aware of that in considering that property? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can address.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, thanks, Gary.
And if you'd like, I can, I can respond as we go, but. So absolutely, there's been a number of geotechnical investigations done down there. Obviously, you look at historic aerials, you know, from Schuster, from Cal Poly Humboldt. It's clear that was a giant log pond down there. So Paradise K is a good example of a development that developed within the footprint of the old log pond. They had to do a large mat slab, an engineered foundation design that was a bit more expensive. But it's what was necessary to develop in that area. It's expected that the Danko project, or anybody that develops on that other side to the north, would probably have to do the same thing. And it adds cost, but it can be resolved through engineering. So.
Great, thank you, Gary. Any other public comment? Yes, Adeline, go ahead.
I'm very sorry to hear that we have had a resignation of a planning commissioner. That's a very difficult job. I was secretary of the Planning Commission for a couple of years and saw some real hard workers, and it is a difficult job. We have a need for affordable housing in Blue Lake. The Badawatt Community Affordable Housing Project was thoughtfully named and passed by the previous Blue Lake City Council. It will also have.
Does this have to do with the housing element?
I think so. Isn't it housing?
No.
Oh.
Yeah. Just housing element.
All right, well, in that case, I'm in favor of moving forward with the housing element.
Okay, great. Adeline, apologies. Go ahead, continue. Okay, I'm getting different. In directions.
Information only.
All right, so I'm moving on. So the Badawatt Community Affordable Housing Project will have retail commercial on the first floor, housing on the second and third floor. I toured the Sorrel project in Arcata and found it to be an excellent model. Now, it's much larger than what we're going to have here, much, much larger. But it has solar panels, a common area, a manager on site, and net zero energy use. So I would encourage us to move forward on this, and thank you.
Thank you, Adeline. Any other public comment? Yes, go ahead, Barbara.
Thank you. I toured the apartments, the Danko apartments in Samoa, and there's a lot of broken-down cars, and there's dogs in cars. Because they're not allowed to be in the apartments. And I think that the city should look into owner-occupied cohousing pods. And not have them in the center of that space where the pond is, but rather over at the power plant site. There's twenty acres. It doesn't have to take up a lot of room. It's an opportunity for community members to come together for design using natural materials. And developing skills. And I think we should look into that. We should do things that help our community develop skills that are going to carry us through to the next. To to the challenges that we have ahead. Okay, thanks. Love you guys.
Great, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I also had somebody out there in the Samoa project get ahold of me, because I wanted to see what the project was. He sent me all kinds of pictures of floors that hadn't been worked on in over a year, all kinds of structural problems in the units and things of that nature. When we're looking at Blue Lake and affordable housing. One of our biggest things in our opportunity zone in everything in the housing is to keep our rural atmosphere. That's in there multiple times. It's one of the first guiding principles you have for rural atmosphere. And the projects have been designed even by Danko down in Riedel, where they have small little cottages, rural atmosphere. So anything we're looking at, I think we should definitely be giving preference to somebody or projects that will keep our rural atmosphere here. Strongly support affordable housing. I think we all all can see a need for that. I think the main thing we need to do is when we're looking at our project, just to follow the opportunities on, which was supposed to be a live-work situation. In other words, people have the ability to work in Blue Lake somewhere, live in Blue Lake, have the businesses here, and that's what the support was for. And and a project should be designed to follow those guidelines of rural atmosphere. And should be strictly catering, if not all of them, a vast majority of people who will actually live and work in Blue Lake. That's what it was designed for. Thank you, Rob, can you speak?
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move up to Zoom. Julie Christie, go ahead. We can, yes, go ahead. Julie, just so you're aware, we do have a letter. Thank you, Julie. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close our public comment. So council, do we wish to discuss the next step, or do you have any questions for Gary?
I do have another question for Gary. This is just kind of like asking you to spitball it, but. As you know, with the seventh cycle coming down.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, it's just, it's the difference between a garden hose and a fire hose at full throttle, as far as the amount of housing. And and I guess the numbers that are coming our way.
I think it might be around forty units or something.
Well, this, I'm wondering, is when we're looking at that over all those thousands, how much it increases here? And when we go through this next cycle, do we then again review these, the site inventory and say, okay, well, now this. This property does meet a certain threshold to become multifamily, or at what point are we kind of stuck with what we have?
Well, if the city at any point finds itself not having enough sites to meet the RENA, they always say the same thing, is upzone or annex. That's that's kind of the mantra of HCD. Us planners are always wondering, at what point does that stop? I mean, there's only so much land to annex. There's only so much upzoning you can do. So that is a concern. I think all the jurisdictions are concerned about how they're going to plan for this new RENA allocation. So, yeah, Blue Lake, you know, last time, sixth cycle was twenty-three. There was a carryover from the fifth cycle of eleven. That got us to thirty-four. But this time, it'll be a number that's, you know, around forty or something like that for the seventh cycle. And we're going to run out of sites at some point that are viable sites to claim in the site inventory for sure. I mean, that might happen in the seventh cycle. We'll just have to see and do that analysis.
And Gary, would we like to look at public parks and stuff like that to build on, or what? I just don't know what what's next, you know, like, we're running out of zones, so like, what's our next step?
We'll just have to look at that when we get there, yeah.
Does anybody have?
So relating to what Julie mentioned, where that that site that has just been identified. Now, the project that was planned to go there, which I understand has been on hold for a period of time.
Yeah.
But so that project cannot happen there. So if those, if those developers.
Maybe not in exactly the same form, but and let's be clear about what happened. And they hired an architect to put a concept plan together. They never submitted an application. They talked about maybe a DDA with the city. I'm not sure that ever happened, so it was an idea. And we haven't heard from that potential applicant in quite some time. So I don't necessarily see that as reasonably foreseeable, because again, no application, no progress. I don't even know if they're working with anybody on it at all, so.
Okay.
Yeah. But it proposed, you know, it was a combo. It was, I think there was some commercial on the bottom and residential above, something like that. You know, mixed-use type project, and you'd still be able to do mixed-use with the multifamily combining zone. But you'd have to have a certain percentage of it be residential. You couldn't do like mostly commercial. And I can actually look.
Mostly in terms of square footage?
Yeah, let me just look at the draft of the zone that they reviewed and read what it says. So there is a section in there on percentage of residential development. And it states a minimum of fifty percent of square footage in a mixed-use development shall be residential. Also, a development shall not be precluded from providing one hundred percent residential square footage due to the requirements of the principal zone. So a minimum of fifty percent would have to be residential in a mixed-use development, but you can still do a mixed-use development.
Thank you.
Gary, Julie Christie stated that there were some, the the new zone was applied recently. What, do you recall when that was applied?
New zone.
Julie Christie mentioned there was a new zone applied recently.
I mean, the only thing I could think of is the multifamily combining zone, but it wasn't applied.
Got it.
You know, obviously, we have a draft of it. We have potential site it might be applied to, but we still need to go through the full adoption process, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay.
So our next. Action item would be to wait for a report from the Planning Commission in the September meeting. So anticipate follow-up with the first reading on September twenty-third, then.
We're not sure if that schedule will be met, but you're right, that the next step would be to go the Planning Commission and receive a recommendation that'll. In the form of a resolution. It will have the text of the combining zone, a map showing, you know, the. Where it's proposed to be applied. We actually do have a draft of that already that we've prepared to show it. Just so you're aware, that is a one-point-four-acre site, and the city only has to apply that to a one-acre area. So the recommendation from staff will be to only apply it to a one-acre portion of that site. And the rest of the site is along the trail. So our recommendation will probably be to the point-four acre to apply the ex-open space recreation zone. And maybe the city has another little parklet or something like that. So that's where we're at as staff on the recommendation. But anyway, so you'll you'll get the recommendation from the Planning Commission, then yes, then you can take it through the ordinance adoption process. Even if they don't have a September meeting. And if for some reason we can't get a quorum, or we can lose another planning commissioner. You know, we'll have to talk with the city attorney about how we move forward.
Yeah, okay. So staff, do we need to direct Gary?
No, this was just an informational items to to let the council and members of the public know what has transpired since you guys heard this in July.
Okay.
Perfect.
You just said provide direction as.
Yeah, it's always just a, it's just in the event that something came up, we had room to do so.
It's a placeholder.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
What is the wish of the council?
That's fine.
Is there a, why are we not talking about two acres at the Power Plant site? It's not toxic. I went to the county. It's not a brownfield site. It's twenty acres. You could do it over on the side, the house.
So the amount of actions that we need to occur to make that site viable for residential development are significant. It's not zoned appropriately. It contains of, you know, stockpiles and buildings and things that would need to be removed. I don't think HCD would have thought that would be a viable site for the current planning cycle. In the future, it may be. And we could potentially count it in the site inventory later, but today, there are just too many steps to prepare that for residential development.
Clear, like.
Thank you, Barbara.
But that's why typically in a site inventory, you claim vacant sites that you could probably develop in, you know, the near future. Not sites, older sites like that.
Since we did make an exception, does anyone have any further questions for Gary before he moves on? Okay, great. Thank you, Gary. Moving on to item number five, discussion and possible action for resignation of city clerk. And designation designation of acting city clerk. Staff, would you like to fill us in on this?
Yeah, this was the item that was added as an urgency item when the council convened its regular meeting yesterday. As I reported, then, city clerk Danny Verkhart submitted her resignation at three forty-four PM yesterday, the day of the meeting. And due to the items on tonight's agenda, requiring election official obligations. We wanted to bring to the council the resignation and also present the council an opportunity to appoint an acting city clerk. Until a more permanent appointment can be made in the future. Obviously, as we discussed before, the city clerk is a direct appointee of the council.
And in talking with Jill.
And in talking with Jill, she has indicated that she would serve, um, in an acting basis, um, for a period of time until, you know, the council can develop and, find a permanent option. So that's what's before you.
Great. Council, do you have questions for staff?
We do have a deputy city clerk who is Laura.
Right. Good.
So you'll continue to serve in that capacity?
Yes.
I, I do want to note that that's not the question.
Right.
For the council right now.
Right.
Um, and for purposes of being able to proceed with the three items that need, um, the resolutions. That's, that's the reason. And then we'll circle back and figure out some game plans because not only do you have a deputy clerk, but many of the duties that have been assigned to the, um, the city clerk, they've been delegated to other individuals when they, within the office as well. So we need to take the opportunity to identify how you would all like to move forward with either consolidating into a singular position or if it's going to be sort of this amorphous, uh, piece.
So we're discussing that piece or just right now with the.
We're, we're just looking at being able to do an acting until we can get our feet underneath us. Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, clearly it's not an ideal situation and that's more burden on you to do that. But I appreciate your stepping forward and the understanding is that this would be for, um, as short a period as possible with concurrent activity moving towards, um, reconstituting or at least in evaluation of what the city clerk position would ultimately look like. So, um, yeah. From there.
Any other questions?
Can we tonight, um, kind of give that direction that we want to move forward with recruitment of a permanent person? Or that's kind of outside the scope of this?
That's outside the scope. I, I, I think, I think Jill hears you loud and clear. And I, I think it's, it's already been identified as a need. Um, and so that'll be brought back to you at a future meeting.
Great.
I would like to move that we appoint.
And open up the public.
Jill Duffy as the acting city clerk.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Michelle Segramalise. Does the public wish to comment on this item? Adeline, yes, please go ahead.
Okay, very quickly, this is not unprecedented. We have, um, had our former manager, Mandy Mager, as an acting city clerk oftentimes. Um, I'm sorry about Danny Burkhart resigning. I hope she got the, um, manager job in Trinidad. I know that's what she wanted, but I don't know that she did. Um, but anyway, I'm in favor of us moving forward with this.
Great, thank you.
Can we clarify?
Sure.
Danny is still an employee of the city. She simply resigned from the city clerk designation that the council did a couple of months ago with her.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. I just, I kind of want to make sure that, that that's clear.
So what is her?
She's, she's the finance manager.
Okay, thank you.
Any further public comment? Yes, go ahead.
So, hmm, I really feel that we need a city clerk. We've been struggling with this since January. And we, a, a resolution was made to make the manager, the city clerk, which was not legal. It had to be an ordinance. So we're working off of an old resolution in order to do this. The council has asked to have, be told what those jobs were that got farmed out to everybody. We've never gotten an answer for that, so I would like to see that happen. The, uh, job description is still up on the website, which is bogus. It's not a good job description for a city clerk. So that's another thing that needs to be done. We need to get a good city clerk description so we can get somebody higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comment? Julie Christie, go ahead.
Sorry.
Sorry, I have a new option.
Jill, Jill, thank you for, uh, you know, clarifying the situation with Jamie. And, um, I'm sorry my voice is poor. I'm not fair. I'm not the best in the industry, I'm a major. But, but going back to our city clerk, Rebecca's comments just a minute ago. I understand the concern that her, that she has. However, I just really feel confident in this moment that we would be, um, and thank you, Jill. Be willing to step up this position. And in the time, the time frame that we're trying to train with. Um, because again, again, Jill is actually amazing with giving this city. Just a quick foundation of like, hey, guys, what you can do. This is how to do it right. And, and I appreciate the whole time she has to do that for us right now. So, um, I do aspire to get a full-time clerk. But we've been actually battling this since like twenty-one. Okay, not a new thing. Okay, actually, what time we're told we didn't. But we know we do. She, she, um, definitely.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further public comments? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor, bring it back to council. Do you want to repeat the motion or just go ahead and move forward on it?
Good, we have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
It passes.
And just to account to the where, uh, Jill will take the oath and sign it and it'll be on file.
Great. Moving on to the new item number six, receive and file certificate of sufficiency of three recall petitions and set date for special municipal election for the recall. Staff, would you like to fill us in on this?
Certainly, um, this is a, while it's a lengthy report, I am just going to make it the summary because I presume most people have already read it. Um, and basically on, um, August fourth, we had some local proponents, um, put forward their petition for the removal of council members, Napier, Swatki and Stefani. And they timely filed, uh, within the city hall, uh, the three recall petitions. Uh, do you want to note that, uh, we did do a side-by-side comparison in terms of, you know, we, we counted them, we both agreed. Um, and then I immediately took them over and dropped them off with, uh, Juan Cervantes. Uh, he's our registrar of board voters and he is present this evening in order to provide any sort of feedback, um, to the, uh, council and members here. They went through their process. They did identify that, um, only one petition met the, uh, threshold that was necessary to move forward with a recall. And, um, we now have a, a, a recall election, which is on the ballot. The remaining petitions, uh, for Napier and Swatki, uh, did not meet the threshold. And so no further action will be taken at this time. So tonight, what we're asking through the, uh, adoption of a couple of resolutions, um, is that one, we need to certify the outcome of the signature review. And within fourteen days, call a municipal special election to conduct the recall. And, you know, as far as the, um, the election is concerned, council must select a Tuesday, which is going to be between November twenty-second and December twenty-third for the election. Unless this meeting is, uh, continued to September ninth, in which take, in which case we see a slight shift in those dates. Um, those dates are detailed in this packet. Um, the next question for the, um, the council to consider is whether to hold the election entirely by mail or to do a combination of mail and in-person ballot. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that Juan will be able to talk a little bit more about this because at the time that this was all transpiring, we were not looking at having a special election. So there's going to be some challenges relative to his ability to, you know, be, um, uh, he's gonna, he's gonna have some challenges, um, pulling some pieces together. Um, we are also asking that the Humboldt County registrar of voters perform the full services to the city , um, related to the conduct of a special municipal election. Uh, some cities have staff internal in which they're able to do the administration of this. This is a very small city. We're asking, um, the registrar of voters if they will handle this. And that is the purpose for the second, uh, resolution. So we're going to certify the one. And then the other one is we are requesting that they act in that role on our behalf. Um, and then probably, uh, the next piece that we don't want to lose is, uh, if council decides to move forward with a combination mail and ballot, that you would waive the rental charges for Prash Hall, which has been your normal polling site. That will help to reduce the overall cost to the city for holding that special election. I do want to note that while, um, you know, best estimates is that we're looking between eight and twelve thousand dollars. Um, I have included in the resolution not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, just so that we have a little cushion in the event that they encounter any additional cost related probably to the special election, uh, by the state. I think we're going to have a run on paper and some other items like that. So things might be getting, um, a little expensive. So, um, those are funds that, um, were not budgeted and we'll have to figure out through the budgetary process how that is going to be funded. Um, and that concludes my report at this time. If anybody has any questions, um, I will do my best to answer. Or we have Juan or general counsel, and we also have a special counsel, Michael Kulatano. And he's been providing us with the election assistance. Isn't he behind me? Hi.
Yeah.
Um, and so that concludes.
Great, thank you.
Can we put Michael on the big part of the screen so it, so we can.
Uh, he's gonna have to speak and that's kind of how that changes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Council, do you have questions for staff or Juan if he?
Start working through them.
Juan, do you have anything to share with us about the physical polling option?
Hello? Uh, yeah, um, when I first spoke to you all about, um, the polling place option, we hadn't planned on having, uh, special election a month prior to this one. Um, and so our intent was for our internal staff, like myself, to run the polling place. If you chose to go with a polling place and save money in that manner. Um, with special election, we won't have the bandwidth to do that. So we'll have to bring onboard extra help or poll workers to do so. So that might increase, um, the cost of going in person a little bit. Yeah. May I touch on one more thing?
Yes, please.
Our, our staff has identified December ninth as being the ideal date, just in terms of making sure that we get the most voter turnout, given the proximity to both Thanksgiving and, uh, Christmas. And so that'll, that's, that's the ideal date. Uh, you have the discretion of calling whatever date that's legal within the parameters that, um, Jill laid out, but in terms of how close it is to anything else, that's, that's the date that we've been at effect.
And so that's because that's the furthest from either of those holidays.
It's the furthest from both. Yeah.
Okay. And what about if we were to, um, go into January? I think our last possible date would be January sixth.
I think there you run into the new year and all those issues kind of the, the end of the year and of the holidays. It, it's still a viable date. It's just going to impact voter turnout historically it has.
Okay.
Juan, I'm, I have a question, but maybe it's more for legal. I'm not sure. There was the initial, um, reasoning behind the recall that was brought forward. Should I ask council about that or should I ask you?
Sure.
Okay, great. Yeah. Hey, Michael, quick question for you. Uh, so there was, so there were some initial accusations about the reason the recall was happening was because the housing element and how we parted ways with our city manager. And then later on, other items got added to the recall effort. Um, can you address that for the public and explain to them how that transpires?
The recall process allows the petitioners to state why they're doing what they're doing. And it allows the elected officials to state their response. And those statements go fitably on the recall petition. The theory is that people read the recall petition and make a reasonable judgment about whether they should sign it. I'm not sure how much time people spend when somebody's at their doorstep or when you're in front of a supermarket with somebody trying to get your signature, but that's the theory. But that is of course only part of a political process because this is politics. Um, people are free to speak to the breadth of the First Amendment. And there is a community dialogue that often goes beyond what's in that statement. And there will be, um, similar dialogue through election day as well.
Great. Um, is there anything the council member who's being recalled can say or can't say? I mean, can they speak the truth or can they?
Absolutely. They got certain First Amendment rights, everybody else does.
Okay, great.
They've got certain responsibilities as a city leader, like not disclosing what was discussed in closed session, not evading the personnel privilege of city employees, but other than those duties to the city, our First Amendment rights are just as broad as anybody else's.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff from council? Any other questions for, for Juan before we open up the public?
I guess, do you have an estimate of what the cost would be to have a physical polling place?
Um, I can't imagine it would be more than a few hundred dollars. It would be basically any costs that I see are going to be directly just given back to the jurisdiction. And we do so in a transparent manner. So when we itemize our bill essentially, um, and so it would just be the cost of the poll workers for that sixteen-hour day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sixteen hours, that's a long day.
We make them do math at the end. If you're interested, I have an election coming up in November that you all would be great poll workers for. It's just a short sixteen-hour day. It's easy math.
It's a tiny day.
Do you get a lunch break?
Overtime? Time and a half.
We can negotiate.
All right.
We can't put on with that special election on a non-hid.
Timing is such that you can't, it's too late for you to, because you're calling it at this point. It needs to be called a certain number of days prior to the election and that window is passed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Very big change. I'd like to go ahead and open up the public comment. Who would like to comment on this item? Adeline, would you like? Julie Christie, go ahead.
Um, I'm really not very happy to see us in this situation. Um, unfortunately, since twenty twenty-one, we weren't on that. We should have been in this situation. I don't know how many times prior to at least being on our counseling fact, since we've actually been striving for what is actually what we should be striving for legally and ethically. So I, I feel like this whole process, unfortunately, we have to do it. It is very unethical and unlawful. However, listening to the, to the dialogue tonight, I feel like we have due process happening. Um, and I appreciate all the individuals going through the stress and time to deal with this necessary situation. But I'm still gonna say at least, I really commend you, I commend all of you guys. You've been the best council ever, ever. Thank all of you so much. And Jill, thank you for being there and helping us through this.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Okay.
I did have a question for, is it Michael?
Yeah.
Okay.
Michael works.
Hi, thank you, Michael. So my question is this, and it's, you know, I guess the answer is moot at this point, but, um, just how much latitude is there with First Amendment rights with regard to the statements for the purpose of recall? The ones are actually printed and the ones that were, uh, gathering signatures because I, I take exception, um, actually with, with both parts um, as being fundamentally untruthful. So how does that, how do you weigh that out with First Amendment rights versus defamation of character, slander, misinformation, that type of thing?
It is difficult to stop that misstatements about public officials. Eyes to the level of the end of defamation, which is the same thing one of the ones written. Because of a case, uh, called New York Times versus Sullivan, in which.
I'm sorry, Michael, to interrupt you. I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear, um. We turn the volume on the TV up. Yeah, can, do we have volume that we can turn up here? Okay. Okay. There's a volume button up there maybe. There we go. That should work. It's gonna be really loud.
I'll try again.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. There's a case called New York Times versus Sullivan, decided by the Warren Court during the civil rights era. Alabama tried to punish the New York Times for criticizing its conduct and the treatment of its African-American citizens. And the New York Times said that in order to preserve First Amendment values, a. a public official cannot succeed in a defamation or slander challenge. Defamation and slander are the same thing. Well, unless they show that the speaker knowingly told a falsehood or was reckless as to the likelihood the statement was false. That is a very high standard, and many of the things that are said in politics, state, local, and national, are matters of opinion. So generally speaking, those of us who are brave enough to serve the public have to have thick skins.
Any other questions? All right. So staff, we have two, we have to make two different motions on these.
Do you want to open it for public comment?
Well, we did already, I think we did already open it for public.
And Julie?
There was, yeah.
That was it? Okay.
Okay.
My apologies.
No, it's okay.
So, yeah, so we, we are looking for some recommended actions. Number two. Recommendation number two is to discuss and issue a call to set the municipal election date. So that's a specific conversation we need for you to have. We would also like you to express the voting preference, and so that we can make sure that our direction is clear and our coordination efforts are there. And then with respect to in-person polling, that there would then be the use of crash hall. Everything else follows forward through the recommendations that those three actually need to have you guys to weigh in explicitly.
So with date crash hall and then what else?
So it's basically number two, three, and four. That's what I need you to kind of clarify when you're making a motion.
And it's one motion for everything.
You can do it in one motion, you can do it in multiple motions.
Can we please do it in single, single motions?
Yeah, just make sure that it's then all inclusive of those three items that we need clarification on. It certainly would be cleaner.
Yes.
So can I move that number one, we receive and file certificate of sufficiency and sufficiency of the local recall petition seeking removal of council members, Navy or Swatski, it's Kefani.
So just to point a clarification on that. Items one through four in the recommended, recommended action are really just discussion items. Those will get incorporated into the two resolutions that are five and six. So resolution number one, two, three, nine is, with that adoption, is to certify the sufficiency or insufficiency of the recall petitions. So perhaps it's best to start with the adoption of resolution one, two, three, nine, because there's no blank spaces in that that require discussion. And then resolution twelve forty has some blank spaces for the date of the election, the mayor of conducting the election. And then we can take up crash hall as part of that motion as well. So again, I'd recommend we take up resolution one, two, three, nine. Certify the sufficiency or insufficiency of the recall petitions, and then we can move on to the rest of the discussion items.
Okay. Well, then I move that we adopt resolution one, two, three, nine.
We have a motion?
Second.
A second. Last. Do I need to open up for public comment again?
To be clear, I have a packet from last night that would still state Danny Burkhart is city clerk. I assume these things we, those.
I've already changed the signature pages, so they're ready to go.
Great, just for clarity's sake. That's what we're working with. Thank you.
One last call for public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back. All right, we have a motion, a second on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Be a roll call vote.
Okay. Napear?
Aye.
Sorry, Jill, that's your turn.
Roll call. Councilmember Louis Lusa?
Aye.
Councilmember Swatski?
Aye.
Councilmember Kefani?
Aye.
Councilmember Bales?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. All right. The next item?
So I think the next discussion point would be the date of the election.
So I'm gonna move, and I don't know if it's, I'm going to suggest that we set the date in two weeks on September ninth. We have fourteen days with which to work with in the date setting, and I would like to suggest that we.
You would like to continue?
Would like to continue, yes, I would like to continue. And do we continue the entire thing? We continue the resolution of one, two, four, zero?
We can adopt the resolution without the election date.
So we cannot. Well, then I would move that we continue resolution one, two, four, zero to September, to a special meeting on September ninth.
We have a motion?
I'd second it.
Second. Public comment? Seeing none, coming back to, yes, Juan, go ahead.
Yeah, I have some comment. It would be a courtesy to us if you could handle this during this meeting. We have a lot on our plate and being able to plan out, we need every day that we can, given the special election that's coming at us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I absolutely appreciate that. I also realized that if we set the date tonight, that limits us to certain dates that may not be as suitable as others, correct? We cannot, we cannot choose a date past the December, is it twenty third?
You have to set the date based on the window which is prescribed in a code.
And that window starts tonight, does it not?
Well.
It starts when the election is called. It's ex-actum.
You're muted.
That's why I completed that.
That's right.
The win, the window starts when we call the election. So when we adopt resolution one, two, four, zero, that's when our window starts. That's the date that dictates the possible election dates.
That's correct.
So we have a certain, we have a certain date range if we set the election tonight. We have a different date range if we set the election on September ninth.
That's correct, in the same way that it changed from yesterday to today. So it just gets moved over that many days.
Okay. So I stand by my motion. I apologize for any, any difficulties that could cause, but I stand by my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, there's a second, and the reason I support this is I, I do clearly hear the challenge and the burden it puts on the county. And as much as we could accommodate, I would, but I also think that the largest burden is on the person who is under recall. There's a great deal of work and effort and communication and time that has to go, that has to be put out into the community. So if you're asking for time for consideration on that, I think that the council can provide and come back on September ninth and decide these things.
Thank you.
Speak to that? Sure.
I have very severe concerns with that being the cause
Okay.
that impacts when you set your election. It, it seems to me that it's the council taking a stance on the election. I'll let Michael speak to you because he can provide legal advice on that front, but that being the rationale makes me deeply uncomfortable.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Michael, would you comment on that, please?
The council is entitled to express an opinion. I don't know whether it wants to. And the law says you can choose dates within these windows. So I think this is all part of the process.
Thank you. All right. So we have a first and a second. Does the public wish to comment on this item? Yes, go ahead, Adeline.
I really appreciate Juan Cervantes being here and his expertise in these issues. I think that all of us here would appreciate that a date be chosen this evening. I think that it's starting to look a little too political when we are moving it to September fourteen, or September ninth. And also, this is a matter of transparency, which was something I heard a lot at the last election. And again, it looks like the council is not being as completely transparent as they can be by having a special meeting to choose this date. I think this December ninth date is a perfectly fine date. You don't want to have it close to Thanksgiving on the twenty fifth. You don't want to have it close to Christmas on the twenty third. And I think that this motion that's been moved and seconded should fail.
Thank you. Yes, Barbara, go ahead.
Is there, so can they, if you want to set the date for what, to give yourself some time, could, how about just, are you allowed to set it out until February, say Valentine's Day?
No, we're not.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, go ahead.
I would just say that I can speak for myself, and I would like Adeline not to speak for me. And if that's the choice that you make to move it out till September eighteenth, I think that's fine.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Lori Ponte, go ahead. Lori?
I think she's trying to get her on.
Any other public comment while we get Lori going?
Okay.
Yep, yep, go ahead, Lori.
Okay. Yeah, I, I totally disagree with Adeline. I think this is a very pivotal election, and I think that it should be rushed. I understand your agenda. But I believe that, you know, we need to take as much time as necessary. I think that in December is adequate enough time for probably because, most importantly, because of the cost to the city. So this city has enough time to figure out where they're going to be able to get funding for this election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments?
Hi, this is Angela here. I just wanted to say that I agree with Lori Ponte. I said what she said.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? Bringing it back to council. I have a motion and a second. Juan, I have a question for you. What is the benefit of delaying it till September?
I don't see one. The reason stated was that it would give the member being recalled the greater opportunity to do outreach. In terms of the conduction of the election, I don't see a difference. In terms of when you receive the bill, I also don't really see much of a difference.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can I ask Elisa a question? Is it okay, like, is it okay to ask her a question? Like, how, how does waiting until September inhibit you from, from starting now, going to where it are? Or doing whatever you do?
That's not an issue for me. I just feel like if we have to narrow something down tonight, that's just one more burden that we have to decide right now. And I think we should have a little more time to consider our options and consider the impact of those decisions. And, and I don't see a problem doing that. And again, I, I apologize if there's any inconvenience in any way, shape, or form to Juan or his, or his staff. But quite frankly, this has been an enormous inconvenience to everybody sitting at this table. So quite frankly, Adeline and your friends, this is what, what makes good sense to us.
Jill, can I ask a question or Michael? Michael, let me ask you a question. No matter what, we, we have to go through the process, correct?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, great. Just making sure. I'm just trying to figure out the September ninth date here, so.
I think the other piece, though, is while he's saying, oh, yes, failure to act puts it in the county's hands.
I'm just trying to.
We're not going to fail to act.
Well, but I mean.
We're acting thoughtfully.
In the interest of that range, those are your three.
I feel very strongly that there's not going to be a big difference, at least from the standpoint of choosing a date if we do it tonight versus doing it on a special meeting night of September ninth. That's just my opinion. We need to look at the calendar, look at what makes sense. It looks like there's recommendations that are very strongly stated with good reasoning. And it seems to me that moving this out to another day is going to just keep delaying the inevitable. We do have to take action on this. Waiting for a special meeting doesn't make any sense to me. That's my opinion, and that's, that is where I'm sitting right now. As painful as all of this is, I do not want to dismiss any of the, the concerns and the inconvenience and the, however you want, you know, many, many other descriptive words to use about the situation that we are in right now. However, it feels like to me that I would be ready to make a motion for a set date tonight. That's my opinion.
And we already had a motion and a second on the floor, so we need to vote on that first. So would you mind repeating motion for me?
My motion is to continue item number six, approval of resolution twelve forty to a special meeting on September ninth.
All right, and we had a second from Napear. All right.
And I want to just mention that we have a whole lot of items that didn't get on our agenda tonight. So we're absolutely going to be having a special meeting on September ninth. So we're not having a special meeting for just this purpose.
So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It doesn't.
I said aye.
Oh, okay. Sorry, apologies, I didn't hear you.
Okay.
So nay, nay. So the motion?
Three, two.
Three, two. All right, so the date will be September ninth then that we revisit this, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Thanks, Mike.
It was Michelle.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike. Are we all done with that?
Good night.
Thank you, Michael. All right.
I need to take a call, I'll be back.
We have to do one more thing, I think, right?
We had a few.
Elisa, are you leaving?
I mentioned I had to take a call, I'll be back.
Okay. All right.
Do you want to take a break until she's able to come back?
It would, it would make more sense to, let's take a five minute break.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Sir, you'll need to call the five minute break.
I'd like to call a five minute break.
Timer on.
Break. Moving on to item number seven, sending continuing, continuing resolution for fiscal year budget twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Staff, would you like to fill us in on this?
Yeah. We are asking that council consider authorizing a second sixty day extension so that the city can continue working on the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, twenty six budget. Oh, excuse me, that we continue using the twenty five, twenty four, twenty five budget for purposes of some spending authorities until the twenty five, twenty six budget is approved. Too many numbers floating around in my head right now. So, and then that would then, you know, when it's presented and comes before council. So your staff presented at your regular meeting of May twenty seventh, the first draft fiscal year twenty five, twenty six budget. And since that time, there have been a number of changes that occurred within the city's staffing. And that would include, obviously, the separation of the former city manager, the appointment of an acting city manager, and then most recently securing my services as interim city manager. These leadership transitions, in addition to the loss of your contractor, who also has provided assistance, the loss being he's simply out, he's not available to perform some of the, the financial services for the city is significantly. to perform some of the, the financial services for the city is significantly slowed down the budget development process. So your window for that sixty-day extension that was passed earlier this year is, it is coming to a close. Failure to move forward with a, another adoption means we don't have the authority to be paying the bills, if you will. So we're asking for a second extension of your, your prior year's budget. I'll conclude there because I am definitely beginning to fade. So sorry.
Great. Um, questions? Go ahead.
Well, just one comment right away. Thank you for putting in a monthly cap of one twelfth in this, in the budget expenditures so that we don't get too far ahead of ourselves on that.
I have a question about expenditures, and that is, is anything being looked at? I mean, knowing that we're expecting a significant deficit based on the earlier projections, are you looking at anything that can be reduced, start beginning now? Are there any discretionary items that are happening that might be curtailed if we, sooner rather than later?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do want to just sort of point out that I've got less than thirty days under my belt here. Many of the expenditures have already been incurred and they will be paid because those were services rendered. And those vendors and/or employees deserve to be paid, right? So I, I'm going to state the obvious. But there was an item that we were originally planning to come forward to this, you know, meeting tonight for an allocation for some items. That's been put on hold. So if it's, if it's more discretionary in nature, I'm going to put them on hold. If it's something that's related more to public health and safety, I'll move forward with them if that is something that's within the spending authority of this prior year's budget. So council will likely be receiving staff reports, seeking actual authorization for certain payments of services. So it's going to be a, a little bit of a mix of those items. But we do have staff aware that, you know, we're going to be doing some belt tightening and see if we can move forward. One thing that is not in this staff report, but I, I think may be prudent to talk about in light of all of the changes within the city is the consideration to form a subcommittee of council members who would like to work with me in starting to develop. And we're, we're going to need some assistance with the heavy lift, to be honest.
So should I recommend people or are we, how, how is?
Well, I, I don't have a recommendation for people. I just wanted to, you know, ask for your consideration.
Great.
So would a subcommittee could potentially include any community members? Or would it just be limited?
Really like it to be the subcommittee of council, but I'll defer to Ryan.
Yeah, I, I think a subcommittee of the council, an ad hoc committee is probably most proposed.
Okay.
Well, I'm interested and available. Just throw my hat in the ring with whomever else.
I would be interested as well.
Okay.
And anyone else can jump in. I said I would be interested as well, but anyone who jumped in.
Council have any questions for staff about how this is going to proceed or any more details?
For on the, on a possible ad hoc committee or in general?
Before we open up to public.
Yeah. I did have a question, kind of going back to what you're saying, that those expenses that come in that maybe aren't absolutely clear and what they are for or otherwise trigger, question mark. Did you have a particular dollar amount or cap that you would be a trigger? It's just going to be item by item?
No, I think it's really going to depend on the nature of what the proposed expenditure is.
Okay.
I mean, we all know the saying, right? Death by a thousand cuts. You know, sometimes if they're small ticket items and they really aren't necessary, those can add up to be a lot. So I don't want to be too narrow in a definition. I'd like to be able to have some discretion on that.
Lovely, thank you. That also brings me to, just bringing an awareness to you. It was several meetings ago, prior to you being here, that the council was requesting that we see information relevant to the credit card expenditures themselves. We just get the final bill, but it would be nice, if possible, to include that in a report. Or at least that you are, you know, the knowledge that you are reviewing those items that goes in within that credit card. What we'd seen are expenses that some are, you know, sometimes are going up seven, eight, nine thousand dollars a month. And as a council, we're approving that, but we have no idea what's behind that, how that money is applied.
Are you approving it or are you receiving it?
Sorry, we're approving through warrants and dispersments. That's what we're getting.
So one thing I would say, which would be very helpful, is if, in a conversation around the dispersments, if you have a question about any particular item, you know, get that to us as soon as you're able to flag it because we can bring that information to the meeting, right? And we can, you know, walk through or we can answer it over the phone and, and maybe provide some assurance as far as, you know, what it is or what it isn't. Because I think that when you're asking in the course of the meeting and it is going to be a packet, then what you're going to hear is we don't have that information available. And then that's very frustrating for you and it's very frustrating for staff. So if you're aware of this, then let us know and we'll get that information for you. So this evening, there were a couple of items, for example, on the dispersment that I was like, huh, these are things that I would be asking about. So prepared some, you know, clarifications for you. I think that as time goes on and after you've served for a year, two years, three years, there are certain things that become like, oh, that's right, we know what this is, that, you know. And it's good for the public to hear as well, right? So I, I, I think it's a very healthy process. If you're unclear, give us an opportunity to pull that information because in the course of credit card statements, they can be bundled and we can provide those answers.
Great. And I hope, just for clarity's sake, I hope you understand, I wasn't asking to have had that information tonight.
Oh, I didn't get that. No, 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 no. No, I, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good question and, I mean, they're easy to answer. Right? It's just a lot of details. So we know how to narrow it down, that we can get to the information. It's very easy.
One of the things that I was thinking about is that even at one twelfth, if we are already two months into this and then another two months, that's almost a quarter of the budget. And so I would be concerned if there are areas in the budget where a quarter of that could be spent. And we're trying to make decisions about how to proceed and where we might, you know, get money from in order to balance this budget moving forward, that I would like to see it kept to what's really necessary.
So let me give a, kind of a, for instance, there will be an allocation from the Humboldt County Association of Governments, right? For your transportation funds, to have that released. We need to file a claim. And what we would do is at the point, we would ask council to authorize moving forward with the claim because that's going to be an action on the budget. We have money coming in. Oh, and by the way, we're going to have a payment to HCOG, excuse me, HTA, Humboldt Transit Authority, for, for the transit portion of the annual invoice. We would ask that they would get put into the line item. We would identify what that line item is so that we're receiving the funds. We're authorizing the expenditure of funds because, you know, it's more than two thousand dollars, let's say. And then that way, you've got the transparency for the public board. The auditor is going to be a lot happier to see when those monies are flowing in and out of the city coffers. If that makes sense. So there will be items that are going to be coming forward to you because those specific amounts were not in last year's budget because they had been adjusted every year. So as we know, a more refined, so. That, that, that would be how I would propose to move forward with those items.
Great.
And Jill, I just want to say a comment. These staff reports are amazing. And what I find about this being given all the fiscal information, all the background, the discussion, it made my job so easy to be able to look through this, read through it and really understand and, you know, the fiscal impacts, know everything about it, be given options very well then. Thank you so much.
Right, yeah. And the alternative stated as well. It's a request from a while ago. Here we have it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to open up for public comment. So there's no further questions from council? Does anyone wish, yes, Adeline, go ahead.
Hi. I have been concerned with the hundred thousand dollar deficit in our budget. I want to note that in the eight years that I was mayor, all of our budgets came on time and under budget. Even when Blue Lake Power stopped paying their rent, we were able to find a solution to that problem. So I'm encouraged, but still concerned about what's happening with our budget. Cities can go bankrupt and it concerns me that that's where we're headed. I don't mean to be an alarmist, but it's concerning. Jill has a lot of experience with helping with budgets. I know she did a good job with the Humboldt County Fair. I think they were having budget problems as well. So perhaps there's a silver lining here. With all due respect to the lawyer, I think perhaps you need to look at not having him here the whole time. No, no personal, this is not personal. I'm just saying that at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, that racks up pretty quickly. Anyway, good luck.
Thank you. Let's go ahead.
Well, I know Jill probably doesn't know the history, but we had all kinds of major pipe dream projects here. We were had to have a RV park down here. That would have been a major influx of cash flow for the city. First, we were assured there were people looking at, apparently no one was actually looking at those projects. We have another project here that I haven't seen moving forward that was supposed to be, the courtyard was supposed to be redone down there. And of course, that would have been acquisition money to buy the properties and those things. So unfortunately, we don't have the, these one-time cash flows we might be able to use to get from point A to B. I don't know what the city's borrowing capacity is as far as need to borrow. That might be necessary. And my thing I want to point out is, is that if we didn't have certain people spending eight to twelve grand for their own personal agenda things, we wouldn't have those little things nicking away. That would have been really considerate. People to think about the cost. Some of us who could have done recalls on previous prior said, no, I'm not going to spend eight to twelve grand. We're going to go ahead and let the process happen. So hopefully, you guys have now the difficult job of possibly cutting down on certain services. You're going to have to probably look at certain things like your park and rec project. I'm not sure what analysis would show if that's paying for itself. Certain services might have to be cut back, unfortunately. Because it's one of the things, but it's tough times. Humboldt County has frozen their positions, basically. So if you have vacant positions, you may not be in a position to be able to fill those, which would be a great benefit to have. I know Jill needs to support staff, but as things open up, all these position kind of things and the policies in many, many places are, they're just freezing those positions. And sometimes it's a real tough time all over and especially all of Humboldt County because we no longer have our cash cow or green crop out there anymore. And so everybody seems to be suffering. So think about Tina's speak on this.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Anyone on Zoom? Oh, yes, apologies. Go ahead.
So as the public, you know, I went through like the dispersments. So if I had questions, would I come in and talk to you?
So it could be handled two ways. Yes, feel free to give me a call. And I think probably the other piece is either asking one of your council members to have that item pulled or when the comment comes up for public comment on the consent agenda, go ahead and ask. I mean, if you're not asking to pull the whole thing, I have a question about this item and we can very quickly answer the question. It's always preferable for these kinds of detailed things if we can get some sort of a heads up. And I'm happy to answer the question in a public setting as well. So you could give me a heads up, you know, via email and you can ask the question at the podium or we could still answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Yes, Barbara, go ahead.
So I'm hoping out of all this, like despair, maybe, we can be like the phoenix that rises out of the ashes. Right? And I'd love to see the Arts and Heritage Commission work with economic development. Maybe we can, to, to create revenue. Like, what can we do? Maybe we can start a small, little multimedia production company, maybe something like the fairgrounds. Maybe we can, first off, change the zoning for the power plant area so we can have a corner of that and start beginning to have some of the cool old stuff that Blue Lake used to have here before, but at the power plant site, because that's twenty acres and it's not a toxic site. It's not a brownfield site. I call the county. And there's a lot of potential. So can the Arts and Heritage work with economic development? And could we have an office, maybe, at the power plant site? Maybe we can somehow get volunteers together and clean up that place and paint it and begin to rent out offices. And maybe we can have a little tour, all of us together, so we can actually see what we're talking about. Instead of just put a big black X over the whole thing, actually see with our eyeballs and get some balls rolling. Because we have that woman there right now and we're lucky to have her while we do. So rah rah team, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. Last call for public comment. Seeing none on, seeing none on Zoom, coming back to council for consideration.
I just wanted to make the comment that our proposed, our draft budget that we saw earlier is an extension of the last two budget years. It's more, more accurately, the last budget year. So where some comments are made and some assumptions are made that, that the current budget we're looking at has a lot to do with what's happened in the last six months. It's not necessarily the case. It's, it's an extrapolation of, of previous budgets. So, so it's not something that just started, is my point. It's something that's, it's a ball that's been rolling for a while and we're seeing it the way we're seeing it now. And so I think it's important for the public to recognize that, that it's not something that just hatched at the first of the year. It's something that, that's been in the works for quite a long time. So if we're going to have to turn the bus around, it's gonna, it's, it is a heavy lift. We have to look deep and, and do a lot of work on that. So I thank Jill for, for digging in and, you know, going on the treasure hunt. And, and I think Terry and Kat for, for volunteering for the ad hoc committee as well. So, so we can all get to a better place.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've been able to kind of look at a few things. And you've got some long-term debt, which is going to be expiring this year. So looking at long-term debts, you know, where their sunset dates are, you know, and one of the things that I see, you don't have any analysts with the city. And so not having analysts means you're not able to look at some of the projections or the trends. And so I think that's part of contributing where you are today. So hopefully, what I see is we'll get you something to work with. And I would say you're going to have to be conservative and you're going to need to look at it at mid-year. And if you need to make adjustments mid-year, you know, the council will need to make those decisions. I won't be here then. But we'll see what we can't do, at least to kind of provide some level of certainty so that you can be making decisions on the basis of what makes sense from a financial perspective for the city. There's a lot of things that are happening in the world right now. Take a look at what's happening with sales tax revenue and the fact that increasingly we're seeing less brick and mortar point of sale in your community and more. less brick and mortar point of sale in your community and more out in sort of Amazon, Etsy, eBay, you know, whatever it may be. These are having very real impacts on our local government. We're not the only one who's who's, you know, experiencing that. So it's going to require the council and the community start getting creative around that financing.
Great, smooth. I did. I heard you earlier in saying, I mean, you're pretty wiped out at this point. I I want to follow up at another time, maybe at the September ninth meeting where, you know, you had questions, you had, you had triggers of your own when you were looking through the warrants and dispersments. And I don't think, I mean, tonight it would be lovely, but I don't think any of us have the energy to do that. And also you're still learning more details, pulling on more threads type of thing, but I look forward to hearing more on that perspective. Thank you.
I I I mean genuinely, I can show you my list and give you my list of like, you know, some of the items, and none of this is a mystery, right? So, okay.
Any further questions? All right. So could we go ahead and do a roll call vote to approve resolution number?
Yeah, we don't have a motion yet.
Um, given that today is the end of the extension, I would move that we approve resolution number twelve forty-one authorizing a temporary extension of appropriations for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, pending the adoption of the annual budget, and file the approved resolution with the Humboldt County Auditor's Office.
And formation of a
And formation of an ad hoc committee to assist in the development and assessment of our budget.
Thank you.
Okay. Second.
We have a first and a second.
I'm sorry, John.
Napier is the second. I had a question, actually. Did we need to appoint the ad hoc members before we made the motion or after? That was my question.
Oh, I had them recorded as as Kat and and Terry. If that's still the will, we can include that in the motion.
I I think kind of to follow the pattern that I'd seen in the past and correct me if I'm wrong. But I think what had been happening is that the mayor would kind of make those appointments on the ad hoc. So.
That's the only reason I was.
That's how you guys handle it. That's fine.
I'm fine with the way it proceeded this time. This this way is fine.
Just to make sure that we're kind of comfortable with the process.
Thank you. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say hi?
No.
Roll call.
Council member Napier?
Yes.
Council member Louis Lucin?
Hey, hi.
Yes.
Julie Skipponi?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry Bailey?
Yes.
I think there's some people in the waiting room too.
Oh. That's new. They must have watched.
So in the past, sometimes we had ad hoc committees or by volunteer. So that's, that can be, that's a correct way to do it as well as appointment.
Yeah, I mean, ad hocks can be formed. Really, anyway. Usually it's the chair mayor that appoints the committee members. I think this motion incorporated the appointment to this committee.
Yeah.
But yeah.
I just wanted to be clear about, I just want a little clarification about the way that we can format.
So I I do want to note that time is of the essence, right? So if if we know who we're working with, we're going to be able to kind of move things along, recognizing that there's, there's already a lot on the plate that we're trying to deal with. So I think as you start normalizing some of your financial processes, then you should absolutely consider putting together like a working group or something like this. But for purposes of, we're asking for a secondary extension in that window. Normally, you will start your budgetary process in in February, and it's not being adopted until June. So it's typically a very iterative process over months. And we're going to have to try to compress all of that in a very short time period.
And
And I'm a little concerned about that.
Jill, just so you're aware, the council did attempt to start that process around that time period.
And I I did see that.
All right, moving on to item number eight, consideration of transition from verbatim to action style minutes. Staff, would you like to fill us in on this?
So let me get you my my handy dandy little thing here. Um, thank you. So the the timing was actually kind of fascinating. So I want to be mindful that Laura was hired to be putting together the minutes. And the verbatim style of minutes is very time consumptive in the course of preparation. And then, of course, in the course of reviewing and approving the minutes. You guys are a little bit out of the norm for many public agencies. Only two percent of public agencies in California are doing verbatim style minutes. Increasingly, they are moving to either summary briefings or action minutes. Action minutes are what your auditors are looking for, people looking back in historic kinds of the motion for an action. And in talking with Laura, you'll recall that she had submitted her resignation to you guys at the last council meeting. I talked to her about the time that it takes to prepare the minutes. And we talked about moving to action summary minutes. That's why you got those those minutes. We were able to keep her at the table for for this. So I figured I got to get this question so that you guys can answer it. As as far as the the willingness. Personally, action minutes are phenomenal. I've had to spend a lot of time over the years going back through old county, you know, resolutions and minutes, and action minutes is what tells me the story, not all of the exchanges, but the actions that the governing board has taken to authorize certain items. With the advent of having video available at our fingertips, if you really want to see the tone and tenor and the spirit by which there's a public debate, you can go to the video. Maybe the third most important thing is if the question is for the record, because there's a concern around litigation, and you have a corresponding video, legal counsel is going to want to pull the video. They're not really interested in reading what the minutes or somebody's interpretation of how something was being characterized. So I wanted to put this for you guys so that you had the opportunity to have a discussion. I think Laura could probably better speak to what the process is. I mean, I've I've taken minutes before. And, you know, the reason I go for action minutes is because you could spend a lot of money having me trying to transfer minutes, and that's just an absolute waste, you know, in in terms of what it takes away from my ability to put onto other things. So I'm going to ask Laura to get a sense of, for every hour of meeting, what does this look like in terms of the transcription process?
So basically, for every hour of meeting, it's a four-hour process. So if the meeting is four hours, four times four is how long it will generally take. Now, there are tools that I started using because of the length of time it's taking. AI being one of them, allowing me to summarize comments. But I can't, I can't do the minutes anymore. It's too much time. I have a regular eight-hour job and then adding that length of time onto my day was was too much.
I mean, can I say something? Just to be clear, we've had this discussion multiple times at the meeting, at the meetings where we've discussed the style, moving from action items, brief summaries to an actual verbatim transcription of the video in which I said absolutely not, I cannot do it again. Like I was like, absolutely no, thank you. But we were discussing the, you know, like giving it a chance that maybe some other people were preferring this. And as we were developing some of the things regarding the the workbook for the the council, what is it called? The council, the code of conduct? It's the, you know, the procedure manual that needs to be updated since twenty thirteen, whatever. Maybe we could incorporate that as as well as some of the agenda item ordering, et cetera, making sure that we have future agenda items, making sure that we have a review of minutes, follow-up items, et cetera. So we were kind of morphing. I wasn't making a demand at that time. So I really appreciate bringing it forward to our council so we can make some decisions about this and relieve this responsibility. I think that it's going to help many, many people. I believe that we did have this item up for discussion. There was some public comment and concern that maybe the videos weren't going to be available at some point. But it's still, the verbatim transcription does not work for anybody, in my opinion. So that was, that's my feeling.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a little history, Jill. There was some comments made by the public that they were worried that the minutes would, the video would disappear and we would lose access to what really transpired. To be honest, I've always been in favor of the action minutes, and I even proposed we utilize the video and AI to generate the minutes and have staff review those minutes to offset the the normal minute taking as well as provide links to the points in the video so the public could actively access those points of interest.
Yeah.
That was something that we were pushing.
So when creating those action minutes, I can give you the video timestamp, but it does not allow me to link. I can put a link to the video, but I can't put a link to the timestamp on the video. So at some point, someone's going to say, oh, that's one, you know, dot zero zero, and can go to it. The other thing I wanted to say about all that was the action summaries. Well, I lost track.
Well, I really appreciate your attempts at finding something that was going to work and working so hard and diligently to produce these minutes for us and then coming up with a solution. I appreciate that. Recognize a lot of work.
You're still resigning, correct?
If we can go to action summary, where it's not so much of my time, where I'm working sixty to hours a week, then yes, I can stay on and do the action summary minutes.
I can show you how to do the video URL and then also the timestamp so you can have it automatically grab that timestamp too.
Okay.
And so
timestamp of the video where so beat, that'd be great.
So I was just noticing that this is, this leads our action summary minutes, which like twenty-second. So it's, it is still quite lengthy.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of information in it. Okay. So this is something you can do, or you want to reduce it even further?
No, that is something I can do. What what you'll see in there is that the public comment at the beginning of the meeting where it's on non-agenda items, I go into a little more public comment detail, and I summarize what the commenter said. But that is the only time in those meetings that you will see what a public commenter said.
Okay.
It will be public comment received or non-received or whatever it is.
Yeah, I think like this is the summary of discussion regarding or whatever.
Same thing. Under each item, there is a discussion section. And then I try to summarize that. I don't want the whole conversation in there. But then the minute, the motion, who motioned and the vote. And that's the most important part of that.
So it seems like a lot.
It is a lot. Oh, one more thing. The thing I forgot three minutes ago was there is a transcription, and I do save the transcription. And it's not going to be pretty, but that can be uploaded as well. It's foxy tones and the double words and the it's got all of that, which has to be stripped out when you're doing the minutes. So that's the other thing I want to mention is that if you do want to have the verbatim, we can do a transcription and load that up to both side along with the action summary.
I think that I'm good with the action style minutes and then video myself. What do you guys think?
Do we need to make a motion for this?
You know, I it would actually be really helpful in the in the context of having clarity around what the preference of council is, recognizing that future councils or even yourself can change your mind, right? But then it's not, it's, it's no longer sort of ambiguous. It's like, well, sometimes we get actions, sometimes we've got this. Having that clarity, I think, is going to provide the direction for whoever is, you know, trying to capture those minutes.
And when we're saying action, we're saying action summary like we just.
Yeah, I'm I'm actually using the word like taking an action for purposes of a bug.
So I have one more topic that I think is important, and that is the storage of the videos. So there was a period of time prior, well, when I was elected in the fall of twenty-two, there were no videos being stored or published. And it took, it took a community member coming in and videotaping the the meetings for that to start happening. And as I'm a person working on the, working on the website and working on increasing and improving our transparency, we now have a a city YouTube channel, which we're just beginning to use. Justin has his YouTube channel. I'm also uploading our videos that Justin makes to Access Humboldt. So they're going to be stored in different places. But I think that the concern that people have voiced in the past that, okay, we have those videos, but where where are they going to be kept? How, what assurances do we have that they're not going to be lost or whatever? I think that's a real concern. And I don't know if, you know, because you think, well, thinking about it, it's just like, okay, YouTube, this is all cloud stored. All of this stuff is stored in a cloud somewhere, right? Do we, are we going to keep some sort of bank on a hard drive at City Hall of this stuff in case the cloud crashes, right? If if, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, and I think Michelle mentioned this at a previous meeting when we talked about minutes, it's just like, what? What's the security of a video? And in the future, you know, is that going to still be accessible? I mean, who knows what sort of technologies we're going to move to?
So I I think that this is part of the dilemma in general around record keeping. Because, you know, increasingly, we want to move everything to digitize, you know, records. Well, everything gets fall apart, you know, you know, and and our our storage mediums shift over the years. And we and we know that, right? One of the things that I think is important with Access Humboldt is that they are uploading things. I believe it's archive.com. So you'll, so somehow they've got the setup so that it's supposed to be there in perpetuity. You know, so you're right, you know, maybe YouTube, you know, gets sold out and somebody decides to dismantle it. I don't know. You know, but but I think that that's one of the reasons that Access Humboldt has been working with the archive.com. It's not the only way, which is why you want to make sure that you do maintain kind of that paper trail, right? And we all know that buildings can also burn down. I mean, it's, it's never perfect. So we just, you know, need to do our our best and be diligent around capturing those minutes. The most important part of the minutes are the action minutes. You know, what was the motion? Second, vote, whether or not it passed.
So for clarity, if we were going to transition from verbatim minutes to brief summary or action minutes, would it be as we develop our style, just remove verbatim minutes? Like, how do we, how do we want this direction to be stated?
How do you feel about the the summary briefing that you received as part of the consent calendar? I mean, I realize a couple of them got continued, but do you like the style? Want it less? Do you want it more? I mean, that's that's part of what, you know, Laura needs to, you know, understand.
I always go to video, so I don't read the minutes.
The summary minutes, I really, I appreciate those. I think before we didn't have verbatim minutes. Right. And so they were just a brief little statement about kind of what happened.
Right.
I would still be interested, and even if it was a I would still be interested and even if it was a tally or. Because sometimes there's really important things that happen in the city and there's a lot of discussion from the public. And to get a flavor in these written minutes, if there's, you know, people who are opposed. Or who are in agreement with that particular item. I would still like to see that noted in there. If that's possible, I think that the minutes that she provided for the last few meetings look really good. I would be concerned about going where you're only listing action because I feel like. That not everybody has easy access. And so we're assuming that anybody on their income level, anybody anywhere has absolute access to technology. And sometimes I think we have to think about that they do not. Or maybe that's not something you can access easily physically. And so I do think that written minutes that give them a flavor of what happened is a wonderful thing. And transparency, so that still remains important, but anything we can do to.
My concern is, you know, she may part ways with us if we.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think a few little adjustments along the way could, could be really helpful. Like my thought was, you know, when you say somebody commented, you could say commented in favor, commented in opposition, stuff like that. Which, you know, without saying what the, what the comment was, it, it kind of gives people an idea. And also at the beginning, there have been times where we said, um, you know, we have staff present and we used to sometimes list public present. And, um, even if you don't know the names of everybody in the room, you can say at such and such a time that, you know, at six thirty five, there were. X number of people in the gallery, X number of people on Zoom. Now, even if you don't, that way it's like, we have a sense of the meetings that like, we had a meeting in February where the room was full. There were, you know, sixty or seventy people on Zoom. There were people all lined up on the porch on Zoom. I mean, but there's nothing in the minutes that reflect any of that at all, right? So I think it's important that we have a little bit, you know, we can add just a very small amount of effort. We can add a little more flavor to the red, to the red.
I'm going to let you go and then I want to talk next.
Great, okay, thank you. First, thank you for putting all the educational components and references on this job of love it. It was educational for me. And Laura, thank you very much for the incredible diligence and endurance in putting these minutes together. I think to state a preference and partly out of necessity, I think that right now. Our decisions, large and small, kind of need to be guided with some prudence and expenditures. And so, and that can be one aspect in saying, yes, I'm definitely for the action part of it. I also recall in the past, uh, Ryan sharing something to the effect of, you know, we're not looking for a whole narrative of what had happened. We're trying to get the essence of those legal pieces that have occurred. So, um, for me, I would be looking for the briefest amount of minutes to be recorded by hand that were. Like a legitimate document. We could perhaps also have second to that, a wash through with AI to capture if people chose to look for more information. It would be searchable, but we don't necessarily have a guarantee as far as validity. But, you know, people can use that. Is that a possibility to where?
Well, so AI is going to be able, from what I know, AI is going to be able to take that transcript. But what's not in the transcript is all the names. Who spoke, who said, who did, when they said it. So as I'm going through there, I have to make those determinations before I can grab it up and say, okay, AI, AI. Make it pretty.
Right. No, I'm not saying that you are using that as your basis. I'm saying separate, um, to at least have it posted and searchable.
Just going to do that separate because that seems like it's adding, okay, now I do my action summary and I have to do these minutes.
Right, and that goes into the larger conversation of the position of the city clerk. So, you know, there's, I think, I think really what we're looking at is incremental, incremental changes. But, uh, I definitely think, uh, less is more for me.
Okay.
Is there a standard set of criteria for verbatim and action style minutes? Is there like a template that's already made or is it just?
Really, I mean, it's for action minutes, it's usually pretty simple. Topic of the agenda, what the, um, motion was. So in the, uh, item that we discussed earlier where we had, you know. The adoption of the resolutions, blah, 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 blah. A lot of times you'll hear move to approve staff's recommendation. Because it was like twelve recommended steps, right? And, you know, that would end up just getting listed out and then motion second, what the vote was. That, that's kind of like the true essence of, of action. You know, but it's, it's not. That's probably the most prescriptive, if you will, but it has to be contained in there. Everything after that is really kind of a personality of the individual councils.
My concern is if we customize the minutes, that's what we did last time and then we got like more verbose minutes than. We may have been expecting. So I just want to make sure we go with like a set standard. So we're just doing action minutes, not like a customized action minutes.
Yeah.
I just want, I want your direction to be clear. Cause I think before it adds them.
I think following these guidelines that were provided for, from the City Clerks Association for preparing minutes. Is really adequate in, I mean, in my opinion, it's pretty clear about. Brief summary minutes should be impersonal and not attribute views to individual persons, only positions and decisions taken. And I think that as we move forward, we can at least, we can start making some adjustments and say, oh, you know what? These are great, but they're a little too brief, like whatever. So I think that for tonight, we could give the direction that we would hopefully prefer, um, not verbatim. Like, and switching over to action or, uh, the other.
And again, it reflects the style of the council.
If we open up the public for comments, yeah, does the public wish to comment on this item?
Yeah, I spoke to Annalee Gonzalez, um, a few months ago when she was our city clerk. And I, I suggested the same thing, that she have just the, the motion, the second, the vote, those are the important things. And as far as what people are saying at these meetings, like me for instance, I would be happy just seeing under, under the action. The following people made a comment, Adeline Jones, Kent Zawadzki, Barbara Russell. You know, I don't even think you need to put, Adeline was for this, Barbara was against it, forget it. Just, you know, it's nice to be listed that you were there. Like I noticed in one of the minutes, I said something at a meeting. But I wasn't listed in the beginning as even being at the meeting, so I was thinking about that. But, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to make it simple. I, I agree, it should be simplified. And it's the only thing that's an important thing is the motion, the second and the vote. But it would be just nice to maybe list and the following people made a comment. And then just, just list the people. So you see, oh, you know, my grandchildren will see that, say, oh, my grandma was at that meeting. You know, whatever. Anyway, but those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I guess we can't afford, we can't afford what we're doing now, plain and simple. We have to cut back. And I think just pattern after exactly what the county does, it meets all the criteria. For Jill's history on this, uh, Jack Kreider was with the Harvard District and when he had a bad meeting, he lost the thing and it didn't get downloaded. That happened in Blue Lake also, where, where they just did not like the comments and that just disappeared. So that's what, that's what triggered this whole need to have it recorded. And you need an administrative record. If there's litigation, you have it all. I just patterned exactly off what the, what the county has, it works. And it's just like, uh, like your mayor says, you go down the agenda and in other words, you're going to have, your whole thing is going to be uncontained. You're the only thing in addition to your agenda, motion made by and the vote. That's all you need for the record. I, I strongly suggest that's all you do. And then, of course, when you do go to the recording, they have a copy of the agenda right there by the recording. You can click on consent. You can click on whatever you want to get to those. That's all the public needs, really. I mean, other than that, it's a luxury. If you think we have lots of money to spend, then you keep going in anything more than that. But, um, I strongly suggest this is one of the first places you've got that draft, we just patterned right after the county. Meets all the legal constraints of what you have and it's following the guidelines that you basically said right there. So, I mean, of course that.
Barbara, yes, go ahead.
Yes, and, oh, Barbara Russell, um, I would love it if you would highlight creative solutions that can. Am I allowed to swear? Sandwich.
Thank you. Last call for public comment, out of the public and then I'll take it up to Zoom. See you none. Anyone on Zoom want to talk? Seeing none. All right, moving back to council for potential direction to staff.
I would move that.
Do it.
That we, um, go from verbatim minutes to action summary minutes. And I would. Suggest, is this, that's not a, I, I would say action summary. That go, are briefer than what you did for July twenty second.
Okay, second.
We have a motion made by Scifani and second by Louis Luso. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Nope. So we had two noes and then I, I'm, I'm more.
Yeah.
I was in favor of action style minutes, not the more verbose.
Isn't that what we just?
I don't know, I thought.
I just said action summary that are becoming briefer than what was done on July twenty second, which are considered action summary. According to our agenda, but our.
Action style is the word.
I'm, I'm not clear what we're voting.
I mean, you guys voted. Okay, well, we already voted, so.
You can withdraw the motion.
So who was the second? Is that Perry?
Yeah, but I said action summary, but getting briefer than the action summary that was done in July.
Yes.
Yes.
Can we just clarify to staff what we meant or do we need to like?
You can restate the motion, right?
Yeah, sure, right.
Between those two things.
Sure.
So action style is going to be. The title of the agenda item. That public comment was off, was offered, what they said, who said it, nothing that. A motion was made by so and so, seconded by so and so and the vote, period. That's all you're going to get for action style minutes.
Right.
An action summary is going to have a little bit more detail. It may say public comment was offered by the following. It may say the council discussed these general concepts. And then it will say motion by so and so, seconded by so and so. So there'll be a little bit more color commentary than strict action minutes, which are just going to be ultimately what happened.
So it sounds like we'd want the action summary style minutes, that well, you suggested, I mean, at least that.
And they can still be brief.
Right, action summary that's a bit briefer than that, than those pages I held up for July twenty second.
But not the style that he just referenced as being only the vote and.
Right.
Correct, correct.
Right, okay, right, yes, agreed.
Just a little bit of color commentary.
A bit, a bit. And we can.
For, you know, entertainment.
If you get a little too.
Yeah.
Get a little too.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll, we'll not, we'll, we'll dial it back.
So I mean, I think. Can you restate the, what the vote was?
What the vote was?
Yeah.
Oh, so.
Do we want, since we've clarified the motion?
Yeah, re-vote again.
We re-vote, okay.
Can we do that?
All right, made of. Motion from Elise, a second from Michelle. Of doing action summary style minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
You know.
All right, moving on to item number nine, receive report and survey permission request from. At least nobody's here today, right?
But it's in perpetuity here.
Thank you for coming, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
It's always a pleasure.
All right, receive report and survey permission request from the safety commission. All right, please go ahead, Ed.
So there.
I, can I just say, excuse me, um, as the, uh, public safety commission liaison. We had part, we had some pieces that we should have seen, but I don't think they got to us. We do have the, um, the actual survey. But we don't have the, the write up of the history of how we got here.
Yeah, and I will be addressing that, uh, just in a brief summary of how we got to this point.
Okay.
Essentially, our, our, I think our second, uh, full public safety meeting. The, then, uh, city manager presented us, uh, one of the topics was. Traffic control on Ice Street, uh, because of due to complaints of, uh, of excessive speed. Uh, not necessarily, uh, you know, too much traffic, but just essentially excessive speed. And, uh, the, the, um. During the discussion, essentially what was, what was given to us was the plan. The plan being the big, uh, plan for all of the traffic control and traffic slowing stuff that had happened out here on Greenwood. And then, you know, and in the more trafficked areas of, of town. And, uh, and when we discussed having stop signs or speed limit signs or any of that. Uh, we were referred again back to the plan over and over again. Um, and so, uh, further discussion was decided that we would look at the plan and then we would come back. To the next meeting and we would, we would have further discussion and maybe more action. Well, there's nothing in the plan specifically really about doing any of this stuff on Ice Street. Despite the, the push from on high to install traffic circles, um, traffic, uh, speed tables. Um, all of the high end, really expensive things that happened here on Greenwood. Bulbouts, um, diagonal parking, uh, stripes to narrow the streets, to slow down traffic, all of this stuff. This big giant plan for like the two or three cars that go down there, you know, during rush hour. And so, uh. Part of that was also, can we come up with like a survey for the, for the, for, for people? They said a survey was done and, uh, great, where's the survey? Well, we don't really have it, so. Okay, so we decided to do the survey and I see it, you have it, you have it in front of you. This was discussed over, uh, several months and we, we added more to it. And, um, and, and during all of these meetings, we consistently got public comment from the neighbors. Uh, there that they would really like something simple. They would really like speed limit signs. Since we can't do stop signs because we don't have the warrants for them. If we don't have the warrants, we can't put in the, so do speed limit signs. Do the radar style speed limit signs that, that show you, you know, that show your speed as you're going, because that works. Uh, you'd see them put up in temporary areas where they don't have it, you know, they, they shifted around in different areas. And so, and so, uh. While the, while the commission certainly supports doing the survey, uh, would be a, a mailer. A mailer to everybody, again, more money. I, I, my personal feeling at, as, as, you know, as a person, as, as a commissioner is really just do the simple thing. Put in speed limit signs. Um, a, a, a basic, you know, uh, analog speed limit sign is, is probably, you know, less than a thousand dollars with labor to put in. Um, the, the radar speed limit signs run between a thousand to two thousand dollars, depending on how fancy you get them. And they're, and they're, they're solar powered and so they have their own power supply. And so I would say, listen to the neighbors and do what they would like to see in their neighborhood. That's my, that's my personal recommendation. Um, the recommendation of the, of the commission was to bring this to you guys and see what you guys want, if you wanted to approve it. Or distribution to the neighbors to get a, a, a more, spend more time on this, more money. Or do you just, we go ahead and make a decision and move forward? Yes.
Oh, question for, well, I'll have to wait for the mayor to turn it over.
Are you, are you done?
Yes, yes, that's all I have.
All right, let's take it to council. All right, you can go ahead.
Thank you so much. Did you, I, I understand that you looked for, uh, information on Ice Street in the plan and did not find any. Did you, um, have an opportunity to speak with staff and planning and engineering here, to see what they may have had?
Well, we.
Or.
Yes.
We, yeah, we did actually and we got a briefing from, we got a briefing from, what was the? Mike, yeah, he, yeah, he came in and he talked about it, but, but, you know, again, it was all about high end. You know, six hundred thousand dollars to put in a roundabout and bulbouts and, you know, and all this stuff. And it's like, well, that's not, you know, that's not in the, that's not realistic. And, and it's not, you know, where are you going to get it? And, and, and part of what we're hearing from the, from the people who drive that route and trucks. It's the only big wide street left in this town. So driving truck through Greenwood and everything is difficult enough with, with all of the obstacles. And so, and, and really a dissatisfaction with people with, with, with this kind of cookie cutter approach.
Yeah.
To every street in town, just to try to get, you know, a little bit of handle on it. It costs, it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, by the way.
I just wanted to, uh, ensure that you, uh, the public safety commission had, had the opportunity to get some type of input from staff as well. So my other question in this is, uh, you're saying with regard to stop signs, that you don't have the warrants for that? So my other question in this is, uh, you're saying with regard to stop signs, that you don't have the warrants for that? Can you explain to us what you mean by that, please?
Well, um, according to California Department of Traffic, you have to, you have to have surveys. You have to, you know, you have to go through this process to actually, to actually justify having a, and, and, and engineering, traffic flow engineers to have a, you have to have, you go through this process to get a warrant that says, yes, it's appropriate to put a stop sign at this spot. And so, that's, you know, that's, that's the.
And I'll add, there's actually a second piece, which is if you're doing a speed survey, it shows that the average speed is higher than what you're proposing to make. It can actually go up.
Yeah.
So, you know, doing a speed survey is not necessarily gonna re, you know, result in a reduction, which is what at times people are often wanting to do. The other component of, uh, your intersections and whether they have stop signs or not are gonna be around the level of service. And so it does require, you know, some, some more work, but it's something you kinda wanna be judicious about, because sometimes you get information that is running contrary to the efforts of the community.
Right. And, and I think, and one of the, you know, one of the, just basically keep it simple. You know, your, your speed limits in town, when they're not posted at twenty-five, we'll just put up a twenty-five sign and just let people know. Just remind them that yes, this is twenty-five, you know, this isn't thirty, like out here on, you know, thirty to forty, like out here on, uh, on Hatchery Road, um, you know, past the bridge, it's, it's twenty-five, it's a neighborhood. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of resistance to the idea that we have to over-engineer something that can be really just simple.
Um, so it's for this, if this survey were to move forward, what is the scope of the I Street neighborhood?
Uh, we're essentially looking at the, the two blocks on, on each side of I Street. Um, and those, and those houses that go from, from, uh, First Street.
Okay. And then.
To, uh, down to Blue Lake Boulevard.
Okay.
So the H, I, and J.
Okay. And is there a possibility of a town hall to discuss further with, you know, asking for those, for that neighborhood, that I Street neighborhood to, to discuss possible solutions and preferences? Because I know a few people have brought this forward in the past, this whole issue and residents of I Street coming forward.
Well, and that's, and that's where, that's where I, you know, I'm paralysis by analysis. The sense of the community is, would you guys quit talking about it and just do something simple? And I, I agree with them. Quite frankly, it's been going on for years. And the resistance really came from City Hall to putting a simple stop sign out there, because they had this plan. They had the plan and they were gonna follow the plan. And the community be damned. So, I would, I would really just, I would, my recommendation is that that you listen to the people who've been coming to these meetings for quite a long time. I'm, unfortunately, they're not here tonight, I wish they were, because you're one of them, but yeah, you're always here.
And, and Ted, you're stating that the consensus of the people who have been involved for all of these years.
Yeah.
Regarding this issue are just requesting.
Yeah, first, well, firstly, wanted a stop sign. Or speed limit signs.
Okay.
That's what they're looking for.
So Ted, you're here tonight to ask for approval for this document and then seek funding from City Hall to print these out and then distribute them, or how's that working?
Well, that is, that is the, that's kind of, that's, that's one of the purposes here. But you guys are the city council. And you guys could, I, I invite you to, you know, to take your pencil and mark the ones you want. And implement it, it's your, it's.
Well, I would have to say that I don't think that twenty-five is slow enough for I Street. I live on J. I think that that speed is way too high. There's lots of activity in those streets, those neighborhoods. And twenty-five is sometimes, so I mean, I think that the, it warrants further discussion, that's my point. I mean, analysis, however you wanna put it, but I feel like it's, we do need to talk about it.
Yeah, you, you could talk about it. I mean, we've been talking about it on the commission level. And the reason we came up with the survey is because it's, it's more of a way of getting out to folks that don't come to meetings. Yes, there's about an eight to ten core group of people from I Street that have been showing up. Mr. Sowoski and, you know, others. But to get a survey out, we would have more of a cross-section of all of the people from H, I, and J that are not coming to meetings, but can see it and mail it back to us or wherever they can get it back to City Hall, so that we can get a good feeling of what really is happening. We know the core group is wanting it simple, that's what they've been saying. But what about the others, you know? I mean, it's a democratic process. And as far as a town hall, I think it would be the same thing as when we have our commission meetings. The people that come to a town hall would be the same ones that are coming to our commission meetings that are talking about it possibly.
So I just wanna say for everyone, um, you, uh, Adeline Jones is commissioner as well, so that's why she's being allowed to speak at this time.
I'm the chair of the commission, I'm sorry, Adeline Jones, speaking as chair of the commission.
Yeah, right.
Hi. Um.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, a comment for the, uh, public safety commission in consideration of the survey. Uh, thank you for putting it together. My comment would be, I think you might get a little bit more, uh, useful information if you were to ask not just yes, no, which one do you like, but either you could do it as, you know, rate from highest to lowest in order of what you like or dislike. So you know, oh man, everybody wants a stop sign, it'll become more apparent rather than just a count of, uh, you know, a, a, an impassioned yes versus a different kind of yes. Um, or you could also have select your top three, or you could have them do, uh, you know, strongly agree to strongly disagree bar for each one. But by attaching, uh, some type of range to them, it'll give you better information to qualify at the end. Then the other thing is, I, uh, I am so frustrated to you by the burden of what it takes to get a stop sign when it seems like such an obvious solution in many places to the people who live there. I've dealt with that myself. If there was a way around it or to research it, I, I would love to see that. Um, thanks for the work on this, you guys.
I would like to comment that, um, about a year and a half ago, getting close to two years ago, there was a meeting and, um, and door hangers were put on, um, H Street, I Street, maybe J. Um, and so we had quite a good turnout. It was, um, it was a public safety commission meeting, we had a huge turnout. Um, there was discussion of roundabouts, um, stop signs, speed limit signs, all kinds of things. Um, the room was full of people. And, um, and once again, overwhelmingly, it's simple, we don't want a roundabout, stop sign, speed limit, those kinds of things. So there's been a, there's been quite a lot of outreach done already. There was, um, in, and just in the, in the recent months, you know, people were, were notified, um, in different ways, not a full door hanger campaign, but people were notified that this was gonna be on the agenda and a lot of people did come. So I think that, you know, doing this is gonna be much more staff hours and volunteer hours and lots of time, uh, in, involved in it. Um, but again, a speed limit sign is, is a good place to start. If we don't have the warrants for a stop sign, we can start with a speed limit sign. And I, and I think we should do something simple. I mean, we've done exactly nothing over the last two years for those streets, except talk about it. And so I think that doing something simple that we can just authorize and get done and then let things settle and see if that solves a problem. Uh, and go from there, rather than spending, you know, ten, twenty, forty more hours just asking people what they want, when we've already done that repeatedly.
Harry, I have a comment, but do you have a comment? I'll let you go first.
I'm just wondering, because I live in this area, so how does that work as far as you commenting on this right now? Is there any, is it fine?
Fire away.
I think, I think you're going, I, I did hear the commission meeting and it sounds like you guys are going over a block over from I Street, is that correct? Okay. I mean, I'm personally of the opinion that you guys have spent a bunch of time developing this um, survey. I think that it'd be wise for us to go ahead and do the survey and then maybe report back with the results of that survey before we make any conclusive decisions.
City manager had a comment earlier. How many houses are we talking about? We have public comment.
We'll get them.
Fifty-five. So fifty-five printing costs pretty minimal. If your safety commission is assembling the information, assuming you get a twenty to thirty percent return rate, which would be really good, then you can have a discussion and then make a recommendation about what the, the action for council to consider would be. If the safety commission is willing to do that work of collecting.
Yeah.
Um, that work, it wouldn't be a burden on, on your staff. I think your minimal, I think your printing costs will be minimal uh, when you're looking at it that way. Throw it on some decent card stock or something.
Are you guys okay if we open up for public comment at this time? Public wish to comment on this item? Yes.
I, um, I went to one meeting and, um, then speed humps that are crosswalks was suggested. And that's a good idea, because twenty-five miles an hour does seem fast for that very, very quiet neighborhood.
Thank you, Barbara. Go ahead.
Ended just about all those meetings with the same group of people. Well, started out, like Elise said, there was a whole bunch of people and, uh, ones who it really meant something important to continue to attend every single meeting for the last few years. Uh, we didn't, we do not want speed humps. Uh, just so you know, uh, that was a consensus, basically, the people and some of those other things. We really don't think are necessary. The twenty-five mile an hour signs probably would suffice. Uh, but it's nice to give people, it's at very little cost, gone to all the work. So I'd go ahead and put out the thing and then, and we'll get that, then we'll just get her done. Just like, you know how warrants work, if you want a stop sign, about the only way to do it is you get a bunch of junk cars and you run into each other in an intersection. They say you have a certain amount of accidents and then you get a stop sign. And that's basically, that's basically what it takes. I have to be quite honest and direct with you, but, um, it's like they wanted, we, we didn't even make words for a few other things, major road things out here. Greenwood Avenue, I think, only had two accidents or something over the last somewhat years as we pull out on there. So it is a big deal to get it. I talked to Tom Mattson, who is director of Public County Public Works on the thing, and he said, yeah, that's just about impossible for him to get stop signs put in. He's working with the county and that's what he does. So anyway, appreciate you moving forward with it somehow. Like I said, it's been a long time in coming and, uh, and, uh.
There is somebody online.
We, we appreciate you taking your time and sending out the thing, I recommend.
Great. Julie Christie and then Lori Ponte.
Oh, thanks for letting me skip in front of Lori. Um, and everybody hanging in tonight, thank you, you guys. Sometimes the meetings drag on, but like our prior commenters have mentioned, like this has been a due process through the commission. Um, I participated at my best capacity. Thank you, Justin, for the Discord. Um, Justin provides Discord, which is, um, not, uh, it's like a live situation that like, as I'm still doing stuff at the farm like I'm doing now, I can keep up with the meetings and dip down for comments. So I've been able to keep up with the I Street stuff. And I live on Fourth and J. I've lived there for over ten years, I was born two blocks down from there, even though I run the farm here. But my son commutes every day and we commute from that neighborhood. We'd be a part of that survey. Um, I do believe if it's a financial burden to the city, I'm more than happy to work with our commissioners to do a door-to-door, um, thing that we could maybe even donate towards as citizens of that community. I think we would get the support. Um, I don't believe we need to do anything that's going to start crunching down, because what you guys have to realize about that roadway there is that that's our next, um, heavy industrial entrance into town next to the truck route that was just kind of done. Um, and Kent has brought up in the past too, you know, we kinda have natural speed bumps and narrowing with the redwood roots and everything that's happening there with the creek and stuff. I'd rather see like that part of the road safened up. Um, and the rest of it, like from the park, the park where the kids have and then to the preschool, just some painted like stripes in the road there that show that that's a crossing area and maybe a yield sign. I know those traffic stops are hard to get. We got one at Fourth and J with no traffic steady. And I know Kat sat there for many years and it's a long topic. You can go back to all the recordings with the commission, but let's do the survey and I'm more than happy to, happy to help. I'm more than happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Can I ask Julie a question?
Sure.
Julie, um, do you think that twenty-five is a reasonable speed for that area?
What is the current speed limit there?
Well, I think that all the neighborhoods are designated to be twenty-five miles an hour and it just seems like.
I have never seen anybody that I felt like was excessive. Um, in the way that I was on, on, in all the transit from school, I would just like to see additional safety measures, like painting or something that at least signifies that this is a, a signified area for crossing from the tot lot, from the preschool and down to the bridge. I think just like, at least protecting our schoolchildren and pedestrians would be step one. Um, do people speed? No. I drive that all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Lori, go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, I agree with, um, most of what, what Julie said. Um, I do see a lot of speeding on H Street, which then ends up at the dead end and then people are surprised and have to slow down. But, um, I've also attended most of those commission meetings, um, discussing the survey and have volunteer time with Ted to dispense, uh, surveys. And it sounds like, you know, especially from Ruben and Ledezma, who's right there on Third and, and, um, I, that the consensus, at least from Ruben, is for speed limit signs at which we don't have any. And, but I do agree that there needs to be some, um, crosswalk painting or something, because a lot of people do walk, uh, between the bridge and, um, I and J streets, especially children. Um, so I think the survey is a minimal type of way of finding out what those in the neighborhood would prefer. And it gives them the opportunity to communicate that to the safety commission and the council. Um, and then from there you can make a, a more informed decision, um, it, based on the responses that you would get. Um, most people might not respond, but they have the opportunity to do that. And I think that's the fair, uh, way to conduct, trying to make a decision about, um, I, H, and J streets. Um, so I, I would just like to support the, um, survey. Um, it, as, as Jill said, it, it's minimal paperwork. Uh, but it might be, um, the best way to make the community in those areas feel included, uh, whether they participate or not. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Last call for public comment? Yes, Justin, go ahead.
All right, so it took us a year to get the, um, bug leash thing done. Since I started to recording these meetings, every single public safety meeting has mentioned I Street. And we have yet to do something. Let's do something. Put this thing out there, get it back, let's, let's get something done. We're saying bugs are more important than kids, come on, let's not do that. Let's just get something done, get it out there, get it done. Move forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, um, last call. Seeing none. Bringing back council for potential direction toward the safety commission and potentially staff.
So is it not possible to put speed limit signs up without some further action survey, whatever?
You can't just randomly put up speed limit signs. It requires a warrant. That is part of what.
Speed limit sign?
Yes. Speed limit sign. Yes.
You can't just post twenty-five miles an hour.
If there's already something in an ordinance around that, then you can. But if you're, if you've got a thirty mile an hour, you can't just drop twenty-five. It requires a warrant. So, I mean, unless there's, there's something on your books, or. So, I mean, unless there's, there's something on your books already that, I mean, I haven't been here that long to be that familiar with them. But, um, you know, you, you have to go through a process and that's part of that warrant process.
We're not establishing a speed limit. We're assuming that there's already a blanket speed limit across town.
That, I couldn't, I couldn't say that you do or you don't.
And commenting on that, I think that we already have a lot of burden on the city manager. I would hope that the public safety commission would be willing or with other volunteers to bring forward that research. Um, and as Michelle Luso was saying, you know, yeah, it would be nice if it could be lower than that. There are more steps. If you want to go deeper in your research, you can, but it will involve first, if, if there's a blanket speed limit for this city, which I think there is, there's a minimum speed limit that's just kind of required in cities. And exceptions like school, just school zone, you know, that's why we have fifteen on Greenwood. So to be blunt, yeah, that, we have to put that burden on the safety commission to come forward with that research.
So the safety commission is going to have to go to city hall to find the information.
I, I would like.
Well, it's online, in ordinances, et cetera.
Sorry, apologies. I would like to focus on whether or not we want them to move forward with this survey and then focus on the other things later on, potentially when they come back to us for further review.
I would like to see this survey, if it was going to go out, change a little bit to reflect what council member Napier suggested, which was a, a scale of sorts of, if you had, you know, three ideas, what would the top three be? Number one, number two, number three, to kind of rank the choices that are listed here. And then have an other for an option for, for, uh, you know, another option that's not listed.
Like filling in a blank, have a blank for other, like.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's what the additional comments and ideas block is for at the bottom.
Gotcha.
Do you?
Yeah, ranking, was that like a funny suggestion? Oh.
Yeah, I can exchange language, put in, you know, rank these choices.
That works. Well, that's just, that's just my idea. I'm not saying, I'm not giving direction. I am just giving out my idea.
Does the council think that if there were modifications to this, um, re, this questionnaire, that it would need to come back before council? Or do we feel that the commission could run with it?
Go with it, yeah. Got it dialed in.
Okay. Can we entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the continuation and the dispersment of a traffic control survey for I Street neighborhood and the proximate area.
And Jill, do we need to allocate resources to that or direct you to fund it?
It's going to be de minimis.
Okay.
I mean, I, are you wanting them to drop it off at city hall? Or do you want to ma, or have them mail it in? I mean, do you want the city to pay for mailing costs?
No.
I mean, just printing is really fifty-five houses.
I was just making sure that we didn't.
Yeah, I don't see that as, as being a, a barrier to kind of getting. I do want to note, um, that it would actually be probably a really simple question to ask your, your city engineer, what the speed limits are, or even the planner, because they probably already have that information very quickly at their fingertips. So, um, that, that should be available. I mean, theoretically, once upon a time, they probably knew what it was, but.
That might have been answered at a previous meeting.
Yeah, many times.
And I think, I think it was.
It is twenty-five. The other thing we talked about with the survey is that we should have a time limit at the bottom. You know, please turn this in by, I don't know, October fifteenth or something. I mean, September thirtieth, I don't care what it is, but we will put some kind of time limit there.
Great.
Can we put a time limit, suggest that it would be before the next regular council meeting so that then we can take action?
I wouldn't take that.
Depending on how fast they get it out.
I think it's better just to put a date, maybe.
There was some conversation about rolling door-to-door with it too, right?
Yeah, and we have commissioners that want to do that, as well as it sounds like hopes that would help, so.
The city manager can put up stuff.
Yeah. Well, they can. Park my truck out in the middle of the road, it'll slow everybody down.
The city manager can also change, like make a one-way street. That's what's in ordinance that was written down around the last few years.
People are getting tired now.
Yeah.
All right.
So there's a motion.
So we had a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, a second, yes.
We have a first and a second.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right.
Did I do the motion? No.
All right. Motion made by Napier, seconded by, oh my gosh, Michelle Luoso. And, uh, open it up one more time for, it's only nine-thirty, I know, we've been here for a minute though. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
Nay?
Of, okay. So, four opposed, or four, four.
Go ahead, you, you hear the mayor now.
Not on your life.
Four in favor, dissenting was. At least. All right.
I'm going to leave soon. Can I just say one other thing about the public safety commission? I want to announce we are having a public safety fair on Saturday, September twentieth, from ten to two in Perrigo Park. We already have fourteen agencies signed up, so it should be informative and fun. No fire on the hill this time. Anyway, Saturday, September twentieth, ten to two.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number nine, I think Julie already spoke.
Oh.
Uh, moving on to item number, don't, we don't have council correspondence?
The only other piece of correspondence that we received was a letter, and I'm, I'm blanking on the, the author, but she wrote about the, um, the night light ordinance that was adopted by, uh, the, the county. And so that was in there. I, I do want to note with respect to agenda item number four, we received that piece of correspondence after the agenda was posted, which is why everybody received it as a handout at the meeting.
Yeah. We need that. I mean, we could see the date on.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, moving on to, do we have anything else? Item number eleven, reports of council and staff. Ad hoc committee reports, do we want to go right to left or we want to? Committees? Kat, do you have anything to report? Any of your ad hocks?
No, I think, um, just acknowledge that you and I had been appointed to ad hoc committee on reviewing commissions in general. And I think, um, we want to schedule timeframe to get together and renew that. And you and I are, sorry, Michelle and I are on an ad hoc on city clerk, which was first to determine the need for support for meeting minutes, which obviously, yes. But then that also was continued on to job description and duties. And I think we will start to get a timeframe.
Just confirm that with city clerk.
Yes.
And Jill, sorry to ask, um, did you receive our ad hoc list?
I'm sorry?
Did you receive our ad hoc list from Danny?
No.
She recorded all the ad hocks for us one meeting.
I.
We.
She may have it, I've, I've got, I've got a partial list that I think I got from Tony.
Okay.
But I don't know that I have something more right now.
Did we reassign Terry to the ones that?
Oh, that was actually something that we were going to have on this agenda.
Okay.
So, yeah, sorry, that's correct. Sorry.
No worries.
I did attend, just.
That will be, um, added to September night. Committee assignments.
Thank you.
And my, my apologies, I, that is just something that I have locked in my brain for January.
Oh.
Oftentimes like the, the common time that you do it, so, yeah.
The Bike Park ad hoc is still gathering information at this time?
And that is you and Michelle?
Michelle, yes.
Okay, and Kat and myself are on the city manager recruitment ad hoc. And so I had a conversation at communications recently with Tripeppy Smith. So they have, today they, um, they sent us the draft of the recruitment brochures. And they're awaiting the job description.
I don't know that you guys actually have a job description for your city manager. And that is actually, uh, some places have them, some places don't. A lot of times it's included by some of the statute or your, or your municipal code or a little bit of a combination of your person, your personnel handbook, so.
A lot of ours is in ordinance and then it's also in contract.
Yeah, and then of course, then there's a contract.
And I don't know if you have one in the personnel file.
Uh.
Or the personnel policy.
Yeah, I mean.
We have a contract from recent, um, I think, discussions and packets.
Yeah, I would have to pull those piles.
They can pull that up and I'll send them the municipal code and the contract if there's some, we'll prob, we'll, they'll probably want us to find to it somehow.
Yeah.
I can take care of that. Um, so anyway, so, um, we're expecting that those jobs are going to get posted, or the job is going to get posted. I think they're targeting the middle of September.
So will the brochure be coming to council for formal approval? So is that something that we should be planning on for the ninth as well?
I, you know, I, I think that it should for the ninth. Um, that might cut it close for when they're advertising them, I don't know. But I think that's something that all the council, right now, we're supposed to give our feedback to it by this Friday.
By this Friday.
But I think that it may be having a full discussion.
Okay. Will council also be then discussing what your recruitment process will be after? Like identifying like kind of the critical steps and timeframe at the point that your job description or the job application is closed? Or will it be open until filled?
I think that ad hoc will work with that with Tripeppy Smith as they're laying out these pieces. But any of those questions, if you want to send them to us as ad hoc, that would be terrific. Make sure that we follow, follow through, thank you.
And then as far as the transparency ad hoc, um, you kind of mentioned some of that stuff earlier. I'm working, still working with the web designer on mostly troubleshooting and, and some little problems that quickly come up with the website. We do have a new YouTube channel. I'm just starting to, to utilize that. There's, there's a, an issue, oh, well, there's lots of issues with all this stuff in terms of archives and moving videos from point A to point B. We're not able, our, our attorney has advised us not to link to anything that we don't control other than we're able to link to access Humboldt, but we can't link to the community news channel because we're not in control of that. So we can't put links on the, on the minutes or anything to that. But once we get those things linked, um, once we get those videos on a channel that the city does control and, and going forward, I'll be doing that. I haven't been able to do the backlog, but I'll be doing that going forward. So I'll get the video from, from Justin tonight and, and I will upload that in the next day or so. And, and I can, well, I'll put a link somewhere. I don't know. We haven't decided, we haven't decided how that works yet, but I'm linking it to the website. I'm linking it to the city website. Once the video is uploaded, that's what I'll do. It's going to like, once the video gets uploaded, then I can link it to our website. And, and then you can take it from there and link that, um, link that to your minutes. Okay. So that's a, that's a big step. It's, it's, it's really time consuming and, um, and it's taken a lot of parts and pieces to get this far. But, um, but it's a big step. You'll, if you, if you look at our website, you'll see that there's videos linked to most of the meetings for this year. And like I say, it'll take a while to go backwards and, and do last year. It's coming along. And I don't know, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just, uh, it looks like the, the calendar is filled in mostly. I don't think there's any blank spots for this year, so. Terry, do you have anything yet?
Can I just make a comment? Because I know you said earlier that one of the, one of the minutes didn't match up. And when I was going through the website, the March twenty-fifth agenda just randomly went to every open space for twenty-twenty-five. So just so you know.
March twenty-fifth, just lately?
Um, it's probably, it's, it's been a little while and I just kind of noticed it.
There was, there was a little, there was a little problem a while ago, but everything was resolved for twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
But there's.
It may go back to twenty.
That's one of the things I'm working on with the web designer is the defaults. So whenever somebody goes in to do something for, to add an agenda or add minutes or add something, the default is the wrong choice. And so occasionally somebody will accidentally pick the wrong choice and update the entire series for the next fifteen years. And then you have to figure out how to undo it. And so, um, so sometimes something happens and we have to find it and go back and fix it. But we're working on making the correct choice. So.
Yeah, just. Let's go ahead and open up the ad hoc committee reports to public. Does anyone have any comments on this? Seeing none, Julie, go ahead.
Hey, guys, thanks again for sticking in. Um, I just feel like when we're giving reports, I would advise our council and our staff on hand, especially the attorney, if so, to always advise not to steer into discussion on items, their reports. I do appreciate the reports and I'm not going to go into a lot of details on these because it was like reports and not a discussion leader, but I think some of them do warrant it as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commission updates, commission updates, right to left. Kat, anything? Michelle?
John and I attended a League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division General Membership Meeting last Friday in Fortuna. It was very lovely to meet the different members of this, uh, this division and to get some perspectives from different city manager or city mayor, city council people, city managers, just trying to, um, get some perspective of how some other folks are struggling. It was, I like, I really enjoyed it. I look forward to the next meeting. Oh, we did get a presentation from Yana Vol Blackovic. I'm not sure if I even attempt got that word even close. But anyway, um, on the wildfire impacts on insurance for homeowners. And there's some recommendations that are going to be coming down for homeowners. And I think that that's really great information that we should all be looking forward to learning more about. I'll just say that.
Great. I'll just go off your League of Cities comments and move on. At least you have anything?
Safety commission, but we all kind of know what that was about already. Get there.
Terry, you don't have anything yet, right? You're not on any.
Not yet. Shall we know?
Um, I guess I will comment. Do we know if Arts and Heritage?
Sorry?
There's a Arts and Heritage meeting coming up. Hopefully that one will happen because I think it's been four months since they've had that.
Oh, I think that Tony has been trying to figure out like the scheduling and availability with them.
Okay, great. All right, any public comment on these items? Seeing none, moving on. City manager reports. Oh. Oh, Julie, sorry, it looks like you just popped up there.
I'm sorry, were we on, um, a report? It's like, did Kat, did you have each report?
Uh, not at this time, although it was a good meeting. I'm not prepared, I can next week.
I, 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 I hope I'm, I actually will want to commit Kat to sitting through those meetings. Um, there's a lot of people on that board and a lot of topics of discussion. And I hope I'm not jumping on any toes with this, but I think it warrants discussion at this point in time for our council to jump in with the rancheria and Caltrans and the Great Redwood Trail. Yeah, I think that would be good timing to make some connections and bring that forward to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item number C, city manager report.
I don't have a whole lot to report, other than just being really appreciative of, um, you know, a, a lot of people that I've been having interactions with. I know there's a lot of. A, a lot of people that I've been having interactions with. I know there's a lot of pent-up, um, issues and anxieties and wanting to get things kind of resolved yesterday, and, you know, like. I'm, I'm doing my best to come up to speed, um, and you kind of have a, a list of things that we are, uh, ticking through, some of which you guys considered ceasing, and so. The, being able to, you know, have our future items moving forward, and I think that that'll be, you know, really positive. Um, I do want to note three things in particular. One is that I received notification from, uh. County Environmental Health Department that, uh, they did, uh, find a skunk that tested positive for rabies over on Greenwood. Um, I asked if they would be doing an additional, um, press release or anything like that, and they said no because. Um, they had previously issued a release earlier this summer, and they sort of see it as being, uh, a uniform, you should be aware of those animals that are, uh, acting erratically and, you know. That's sort of a, a statement, so, um, so, so I, I do want to let, um, council know, if, you know, if you're talking to your neighbors and, and whatnot, just remind them. You know, if, if it's that time of season when animals, wild animals in particular are acting erratically, you know, give them a wide berth, if you will, and take the appropriate precautions. Um, I do wish to note in particular that the bike park remains closed to public access until it is completed. So yesterday, there were four individuals who broke into the fence. This is not the first time in order to, um, access the site and ride bikes. And they were asked to remove themselves. I mean, it's a liability, you know, for the city because it's not complete yet. These four individuals threatened, um, the city employee who was advising them, they needed to leave, so, you know, we really want to. We need people to be aware that projects need to be completed and accepted before, um, you're going to have the insurance and the ability to open it up, so. Um, you know, work with the city while we, while we get through the process as well as the nonprofit. Um, another big project that I was working on, um, was the state controller's office did provide notice to the city. In March that there was, uh. Numbers that were not, uh, reconciling between the twenty-three, twenty-four end of fiscal year and the beginning of the following fiscal year. Um, there were a lot of delays for several different reasons, um, primarily around availability of, uh, our, our, one of our contractors who performs the service. Um, I was able to beg them to give us yet one more extension, and, um, you know, our contractor did, uh, get that completed. We are now in conformance. Uh, with the state controller's office, they will then go forward with the publication of their book, which is called Buy the Numbers, and that was a really important, um, step because. The state controller's office will basically answer questions of the public for anything that is on that website. If there is some form of discrepancy that they are not able to address, then they simply tell the public to contact your city hall. So we wouldn't necessarily have the answer to that, so this is really great. I'm really appreciative that, uh, that did get completed, and now it's got a little bow on it. Yes.
Just to confirm, Jill, this was nothing that had to do with our council, the new council, correct?
It had nothing to do with councils. These are internal things that could pop up onto, um, you know, the state controller's office, reaching out, saying, hey, what's going on? And, you know, so, uh, these are typically very prescriptive activities, you know, where required to provide these reports. And there was corrective action that was necessary, and we just had to bird dog it to get that correction action completed.
Great. Once again, thank you for your work.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Uh, I do have a comment that I would like to see, uh, information such as, uh. Rabies found in a skunk on Greenwood, as well as bike park is closed on our website, Facebook page. Uh, notices being, and, and, I would like to see a more. Not tonight, not tomorrow, you know, I'm just saying, in the future, I would like to, if people have ideas about how we can communicate a little more. Pertinent information at the time, I mean, of course, maybe we need to go through processes to approve things like this, but this, this seems very, very important, very pertinent. And, uh, relevant to public safety and.
Absolutely.
It should be up for. Oh.
I need to learn more about your Facebook page. Um, it's, it's not something I have access to directly, so I need to, you know, delve into that some more, how that's being, you know, promoted, so.
And not everybody has Facebook, and so that's not going to be the end-all, be-all, and maybe notices up on a bulletin board that we have at the town square, or. I don't know, other, other places, other ideas where we can have some notices of, hey, what's new? Uh, and again, my dream down the line is for like a newsletter every month, but. It's fine. I'll just, I'll just stay.
Was this not enough reading for you?
It was good, it was good. It was really good.
So we, we do have a bulletin board inside the post office that is under lock and key, and so certain notices that are from the city can go there. They should not ever be solicitations for donations or anything else, because that was against federal law in a post office. It should not ever be advertisements for anything that's for sale, but, um, official city notices can go in there. Sorry? Um, and, um. Uh, and as far as, um, as far as the city Facebook page, it's, it's been really underutilized these last few years. So, and I think there are a lot of people on Facebook that would see, and if, if stuff started popping up.
Yeah.
And, um, and so I think that's a good tool. Um, and I'm wondering, can you tell us anything more about security at Bike Park? Is there, is that fence locked or people just picking up panels and getting them out of the way and?
I, I, I don't know, um, how, the employee was more rattled about four young men coming at him.
Yeah.
You know, so that, that was, that was his immediate concern.
And I'm thinking if we can lock that thing down.
And so it has been locked, it has been locked, yes.
Was it locked before? Did they break a lock to get in?
I don't know if they broke a lock or they broke the fence, but, you know, since I've been here, um, they've already had to bring in some additional fencing because it had been removed. And, and there was nobody in there at that time, fencing has been removed, so your public work staff is, you know, regularly going down there and, and monitoring and making repairs. Um, when they see that something is missing, if somebody contacts us, then obviously we will follow up and, and do the same. So, um, we've also, not the one for, for yesterday, just because I was coming into a meeting, um, you know, when this, uh, transpired, but. Um, uh, we've also, uh, notified the, uh, bike park volunteers around this too, so when, when the other one got, the panels were removed.
Question, were these, uh, adults, for adults, or?
Over eighteen is what I was told.
Wow, and residents or?
That shouldn't say.
Okay.
Couldn't say. I mean, we're not asking for their IDs.
Yeah.
And we're not going to put our employees at risk.
Right, I was just gonna say that. If the.
They didn't do a threat, he felt threatened.
Okay.
But, I'm sorry.
No, um, that. In the many things that we want to provide, I think maybe that, uh, the training, the online training, you might have something on conflict like that, just at least so they can be prepared and know how to step away.
I, I will say he handled it appropriately, and he immediately got a hold of, of, uh, another, you know, employee, you know. They were able to diffuse it, and they've kind of moved on, and then they left and they closed up the, the gates, you know, which, which is the appropriate thing to do, and probably more importantly, made a beeline for my office.
Yeah.
And make sure those hours are going toward the bike park. Anyway, um, I'd like to open, um, the public comment. Uh, Julie, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I mentioned in the past, given that recent topic about, um, the bike park, just at least some signage that says like, um, use at your own risk. At least something that discloses the city from liability that basically if you choose to be an a-hole and break in there. You're at your own risk at that point, we're not liable, so you guys have to realize I'm your neighbors down river, and I have that liability all the time, so no trespassing signs. Anything that you can do that actually you like, with signage helps with, um, relinquishing the city, and I do agree with Elise's comments. People do pay attention to Facebook, and obviously our city page would be non-biased and to what's really the point, and yeah, we got to get Jill on there. Um, because little postings on like that, we can share it, and the city doesn't really have to try that hard, it doesn't cost any money. And then we can share those notifications throughout the other platforms, and I think that's actually really cheap and productive. Thank you.
Can I, can I respond real quick to Julie? Julie, I just want to note, we don't want to post saying use at your own risk because this bike park is not finished, so that would actually open us up. Okay, all right.
But for all facilities, that should be something that's just posted everywhere. Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
You, you have no trespassing. It's a criminal act, first thing you do is your, your, your staff first thing goes nine-one-one, period, and I mean, that should be your policy. Uh, number two, those gates that you have down there, uh, are not functional, and when I've had to secure things like that, you take, uh, four chains in each corner of the gates. And so those things can't be taken off their hinges, they can't be moved no matter what. This has been semi-permanently secured for probably a long time, so there's no reason for anybody, and so you need to, a few more chains and locks, and, uh, nine-one-one, boom, that's it, and, uh. The sheriff will come down, and if they want to argue about the sheriff, whether they want to be there, they'll, uh, they'll run them and see if they have warrants and everything, so.
Thanks. Any more public comments? Yes, go ahead.
So I, I like the bulletin board idea. I know we have it at the post office, but. I'm a real proponent of the city council having some kind of a bulletin board put on city property. That you, is for you guys, just for that kind of stuff, and I know lots of good carpenters, and I think if it was authorized, we could get somebody to build it that would. You know, allow it to be in a public space where everybody walks, not just stick stuck on the. Post office bulletin board and hidden, but it would be really nice to have a locked box on city property that's the city council's, so.
And we have the porta potty enclosure, so we could put it right there.
Oh, wow.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none?
I just want to say I would really support. Whatever it takes to lock up bike park up. If it's, you know, more, more, um, or hardware or more locks or whatever it is.
So I, I think that the point of my bringing this to your attention is talk to people, let them know Bike Park is not to be used if they see something.
Let us know, we can make sure that we're getting things closed up, and, um, I mean, that, that's the important thing. We had a landfill with Humboldt Waste Management Authority, we closed that landfill, and we routinely ran people, we decided. It's a great motorcycle location, or it's a great putting my mountain bike location, it's a dangerous location, and so we would just routinely have to like have conversations with the neighbors and things like this. This is the same thing, this bike park is not ready for, for use, and it's really important to keep promoting, and, you know, we need to go whatever this process is going to be. Um, and, and just bring it to your attention, um, you know, so that's, you know, that's all.
And as we have finished item number twelve last night, can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.